All right, we'll wait another minute.
No, no, man.
What? Okay.
I'll find the right time to see you.
Okay, in accordance with the open meeting law, the Board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise with glad allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our guests here this evening and those watching on cable.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just at the beginning, I know I for one and my colleagues also are extremely pleased to see you back in the big chair here. And you're obviously enjoying a speedy recovery from your surgery and we're certainly happy to have you back.
Oh, thank you, Steve.
In one piece, well, maybe a piece missing. One piece anyway.
A little piece missing, yes.
A piece missing, but congratulations on the successful surgery.
But I'm feeling good and I really appreciate the efforts and the thanks that everybody's given me. So the first item on our agenda this evening is to sign the May town election warrant. Do we have that somewhere?
Should be a motion in the comments.
We need a motion.
In the big red folder.
Big red folder, okay.
Big red, it's in the red folder.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the May 2nd, 2017 town election warrant.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. On the motion, all in favor. Opposed. Is it unanimous? Is John here?
Yeah.
That's why I didn't say him, he's hiding in the back.
Thank you. I don't want to make too much.
Jane, old Jane, old friend. You can have a coffee, have some drinks. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
My actuary, if I can jacks all of this in.
Next item on our agenda is we have a public notice on the Thompson Club request. Now, read the public notice first. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on the application of Thompson Club Inc., DBA, TCC Grill, Two Mid Iron Drive in Pro Shop, Two A Mid Iron Drive to extend their seasonal license from October 31st, 2017, to November 30th, 2017, on April 24, 2017, at 8:05 PM. All interested parties are invited to attend. We have representatives from Thompson Club here.
We do. We do. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Tim Houghton. I am an attorney, I'm also the Secretary for Thompson Country Club. What I have, first I just present to-
Could you hold one second, what happened to our secretary? Just make a copy. Oh, okay. I just want to make sure that she's recording.
Maybe this will be a good time for you to comment.
Technical problems.
No problem.
Well, sir? Continue, please.
I didn't know if you, what, did you want to wait for Mr. Prisso or does it matter?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to wait for Mr. Prisso to return?
Yep. I didn't see him sneak out, but okay, thank you. We started at 6:30, so.
You have a long night ahead of you, fortunately.
Yeah, it could be a long night.
I know this says, it says October, I just want to ask this, but on the bottom it has different hours from April 1st to November 30th? Is that a?
Yeah.
Is that? You mentioned October.
It's currently October. They're looking to extend it to November now. Lengthen the season.
It just starts April 1st?
Correct.
I see what you mean, okay.
Golf club is not open in the middle of winter.
If I may first, as part of the request of the Board, I have certified return receipts for butters. The Board had requested that I certify, notified by certified mail, butters who were not members of the Green and by regular member, by regular mail people who were members of the Green. Just as a little background, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission provides that seasonal licenses have only two conditions. One is that they start no sooner than April 1st and two is that they be closed for six weeks during the entire year. What six weeks, they don't specify. So anything beyond that is the realm of the local boards. So what we have here today is you have your normal seasonal license goes from April 1st to October 30th. What we have found in the past is that November tends to be not a bad golf month, or it could be three feet of snow and there is no golf. So what we're looking to is see if we could extend our license till November to use it if necessary. Now, obviously, as you can well see, the license, the seasonal license this year came into effect on April 1st. Unfortunately, it was snowing, so there was no golf, there was no use of that license much in November. If it's snowing, there won't be any use of that license. So we're looking for an extension to November. I'm going to address just a couple of issues is that, as you probably may guess, that the use of the license is really kind of tempered on golf and it's also tempered on the daylight. So what you have in November is probably the least amount of use that you're going to have all year because it's dark early. Nobody's golfing after 5 o'clock, so we're just looking for something, this would mostly be like a 12 to 5 type of situation where it actually would be used, would still keep the same hours, but I think that this is just to see if we ever have one of those rare occurrences in New England where we have a nice Indian summer and there's nice days that we have the ability. Obviously, we don't want to stay open because you have to staff it and you have to pay staff and they have to stay on. You don't want to open it too long because you're just, you're paying people for, probably when people aren't golfing. So that's what I'm asking today.
Okay. Board members have any questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions?
Just my only comment was, as you're well aware, I originally opposed the granting of this license, but that's history, so the Board has granted it and that's fine. Now we're looking just to extend it even more. I guess to me that's, again, of concern, same, my concerns are the same as far as the Thompson Club sold their license and sold their building to Mr. Yebah. He made huge investments. I think this does impact him, I think it's unfair. However, the license has been issued, I will be supporting it. I still don't like the idea, but I will be. The majority of the word has spoken enough. The license has been issued.
Every time I go to Mr. Yebah's facility and I see the parking lot full, I find it a little hard to believe that it's having any major impact on his license.
No, as far as during the golf season, during the golf season, it most assuredly would be.
I had to wait three weeks to get a reservation in the timeframe that I'm wired, so. Anyway, any other board members have any comments, questions regarding this request?
Hopefully, we won't be back here again next year. Changing.
No, no, this is, we're not looking to extend. I think what I explained to the Board, you know, this is new to us. We kind of envisioned, as I said last time, I don't want to repeat myself, we kind of envisioned this as being more of a, you know, let's try to get families here at night and we've discovered over the past year that's just not working. This is strictly a grill room for people who play golf, they finish golf, they come in, have a sandwich, have a drink and leave. That's the way it's turned out to be. I mean, we would like it to be something more of a moneymaker, but this is something we actually probably end up losing money on.
I just want to work off of something that Mike just said, made me think. You said you don't want us to come back to this next year, then asking for another extension next year or?
Change of manager.
Change of manager.
Okay.
Well, we are coming, just so you know, you are, we are coming with a change of manager forward. As I explained to the Board last time, we had put on our President as the manager on a temporary basis. We are interviewing, we actually had a candidate, we presented, went so far as to fill out the application and that candidate didn't work out. So we are actively interviewing someone new for a change of manager. So will we come for an extension of license? No, this is, obviously, we'll barely get November in if, there would no way we'd want December, but as far as a new manager, yes, you will be getting an application in shortly for a new manager.
Excuse me, Bob, but I would assume now, I anticipate you actually next year asking for the same extension.
Or renewal of the license.
I would ask for renewal of the same period, time period, yes, if it was granted.
You just, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have to if we granted it.
If we granted it this time, then next year?
The renewal will be for the same time, April 1st to November 30th.
Okay, I can still stand it.
They would have to commit for renewal, apply for renewal. Mr. Prisso?
It is concerning that you have, continue to have no stability with a manager there. And I think you guys need to get that locked down.
Oh, I agree with you.
Because it's going to come to a point where, I'm going to start the vote, no, only because you can't just continue to have turnover, that means you have an issue. And you guys got to get that figured out. You really do.
To be honest with you, the main issue is that you're only employing somebody eight months of the year.
You got to figure it out.
Yeah.
If you want to do this type of business, you got to get some consistency.
Exactly.
You're dealing with liquor, you're dealing in a social environment, you got to get along.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Michael. Any other comments from the Board? At which point do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to extend the seasonal club licenses for Thompson Club Inc., DBA, TCC Grill, Two Mid Iron Drive, and Pro Shop, Two A Mid Iron Drive, from October 31st, 2017, to November 30th, 2017.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your point. I'll keep that in mind.
Is there anyone here in the audience here for public comment?
Do you remember that?
Yeah, I think that would be best.
Good evening, Rich Wallner, 57 Lakeside Boulevard. I prepared my statement just to be efficient and try to hit all the right issues. You may know me, you should know that I serve as Vice Chair of the COA, Council of the Aging. I'm prior Chair and current Member of the EDC, and I'm Chair of the Social Services Action Team, which is a subset of the Community Impact Team. Through the SSAT, I am also Founder of the Adult Enrichment Group called ACT. That stands for Advocates for Adults, Community, and Team. And our singular focus is on the quality of life for all residents, but especially for the adults of North Reading. We've been around for about four years now and are comprised of town residents, professionals in the area, town employees who want to work in cooperation with us, and some of our senior consultants like Gloria Mastrow, or people like that. You may also remember me as the person who ran for Selectman last year. Fortunately, I failed, which my wife is eternally grateful, so thank you for that. Based on my experience in these various roles, I have come to define two types of people in North Reading. Those with kids and those without. Those with kids enjoy tremendous support from the community. We have top-notch educators, great facilities, and offer lots of diverse programs to support our kids in and out of class. I have enjoyed this as my son is a junior, and we have seen firsthand what this experience has been all about. But oftentimes, we can overlook the needs of our next set of people in North Reading, those without kids. Those without kids is predominantly defined as adults over the age of 60, which defines 24% of our town population. And projections are expected to be about 40% within a decade. And if you ask them how they feel, and I do, you will discover that they do not think North Reading is a very senior-friendly town, especially those who have been here for a long time and lack significant resources. As a result, they are often forced to leave town because there is no affordable housing, or they cannot pay their ever-increasing property taxes, or they lose their cars and they can't get around town because without a car, you're hosed in town. As a result, they are often forced, oh, excuse me, so why should we care about the people without kids anyways? We are really a school town after all. Let's do the economic analysis first. It costs the town $20,000 per year for my son to go to school. If I were to pay his way through my property taxes, I would have to pay $30,000 annually. Confession, I don't pay $30,000 annually in taxes. With an annual property tax average of $8,000 to $9,000 per household, I depend on my neighbors without kids to pick up the difference. As a result, I thank my neighbors, and these are real neighbors, Ben and Kerry, and my other neighbors, Bridgette and Brian, for supporting my son as they don't have kids, but they do pay their taxes. But if we choose instead to turn our backs on the people with no kids, we will suddenly be overwhelmed and we will go broke as a result because we can't afford those kind of rates. And that is the point. We are a community that depends on each other. Encouraging people to live lifelong in North Reading regardless of age is in everyone's interest from an economic point of view. And as a result, we get the extra benefit of having a community where everybody knows your name, which is how a community becomes and stays happy and connected. So why am I bringing this all up now? Am I running for Selectman again on some secret ballot? No way, this is my campaign manager, that's not going to happen. It said, it has come to my attention that people are already starting to earmark the $18 million that we expect to come from the Pulte property sale, plus the additional $3 million of expected annual property taxes once that built out. For example, the candidates for Selectman are already talking about it. The EDC is talking about it. A resident at a town meeting mentioned it was a way to solve our bathroom problems. And most recently, I've heard that the Selectmen are considering a town warrant to study the feasibility of raising this building and creating a combined town hall and fire station in the same building. When I shared this information with my ACT group, I heard great concerns. Why is this coming up so soon? We don't have the money yet? How does this fit in with the other town objectives? And do all the residents know and share the same town objectives that we're starting to see come to light? Needless to say, this is a topic of discussion. So instead of saying, staying silent, we all agreed last week that I should raise our concerns as soon as possible so we can work cooperatively with all of you as we explore these opportunities. Some of the people in my group are Rita, Diane Norris has come out, Dave Doucette, I think you all know them in one capacity or another. So let's look at the list of town needs as best I understand them, and again, I'm not privy to everything you know, but based on, you know, the talking I've done. Schools. I would say it's pretty safe to say that they are in really good shape, and as far as Phil is concerned, we really don't have to think about that at this point in time. Anybody disagree, let me know, but so far, nobody has. How about our water supply? Mike, the town employees, and all of you have done a good job in researching this issue, and all the costs are predicted to hit the water bill, not the tax bill. So that one looks like it's pretty well under control and it's vital for our future. And the MWRA connection at Concord Street, predictably that expense will hit the business property owners who will benefit from the betterment that the hookup will offer. So what is left that will affect our property taxes? Well, fire department, we know there's a need. Town hall, I think there's a need. No one would argue with that. Three more, affordable housing, shows up even in your strategic objectives, it's something we're thinking about, right? Would affect seniors, millennials, vets, disabled. Kind of more of a wish list, the intergenerational community center, that would affect youth services, the senior center, vet services, and I'm missing one thing, but I'll think of it, and youth services, all working together. And then this new Main Street. So the question here is, what is the priority of each item listed above, and what the heck is this new Main Street thing that I'm speaking of? Does it even deserve to be on the list? So let's just dig in a little deeper there, and can you just hand these out? Diane's going to hand you out, like the study that the MAPC did studying about Main Street. And it's pretty clear what the title is, it was an exhaustive study, I would say, very thorough. This study was a result of a meeting I had with Mike, G and I were at Heavenly Donuts along with other people. This was the summer of 2015, and we were sitting there, meeting with the Chamber and a variety of other people who cared about this, thank you, Diane. And what we were trying to do was try to say, how can we increase more economic development in town? And if you sit in Heavenly Donuts and look outside, you know, a lot of traffic, nobody's walking around, not much is happening. So I finally looked at Mike and said, you know, because I see Andover and I see Reading, and I asked Mike, I said, "Mike, if we change the highway and reduce, somehow reduce this to make it more palatable, to make it more like a Main Street, is that something the state would go for?" And Mike said, "Yes, it is." And as soon as we heard that, for me, it was like, it's a whole new world, let's think about our Main Street. So, you know, this is appropriately titled, Town in North Reading, Main Street, Route 28 at 62, Short-Term 2016 to 2021 Economic Development Strategy. And I'll just point out a few highlights. On page three, you can kind of flip through this, on page three, and by the way, this is on our website, town government website. On the Advisory Committee, we have a, you know, wide swath of people from CPC, EDC, ZBA, the Chamber, Selectman, myself, the COA, the CDC, there's a wide variety of people that were involved with this, as were a lot of town residents. At every meeting we had, we had 60, 70 people show up. Another thing I will point out is that on page six, at the very bottom, we had two Advisory Committee meetings, we had a community workshop, and then we had a final presentation brought back to the community so we could get final comments. And what you have is the final draft of everything that happened. And overwhelmingly, if you go to page nine, all of the interest ended up being around 62 and 28, Winter Street and 28, the old Stop and Shop, anywhere in that area. That was considered to be, if we were going to do a new downtown, that was the area that was of greatest interest. And then if you go to page 12, I learned this that day that we met at Heavenly Donuts, the biggest problem we have is we have a highway going through our town. And people in Andover really don't care about our town. They're going through at 50, 60 miles an hour in the morning, and they're going very fast. But if we adopt a concept of traffic calming, take in the 12-feet-wide lanes and bring them down to a more palatable level of 11 or 10 feet, you're going to slow the traffic down and actually benefit the community if you want to do some economic development. I didn't know it was called traffic calming until literally that day I was going to Boston, put on NPR, and they started talking about it in New Orleans, how traffic calming has been very effective. So that's what that's about. If you go to the next page, on page 13, one of the big things they call for is if you're going to create a Main Street, you have to have a recognizable gathering space or landmark. That's what that talks about. You can't just have something in the middle of nowhere, you need to put it somewhere where people can gather. And then the most exciting one is on page 19. If you start thinking about creating more things that build up synergy, you can see on page 19, they're talking about what the town needs, which is about 37 to 75 townhouses and about 130 to 172 condos and apartments. Affordable would be the right thing here. And then they are saying in this study that if you put all these elements together, traffic calming, put a there there, put an activity there, bring in your residential housing, you'll be able to add into the town 10 stores that we don't currently have, and be able to add into town six restaurants that we don't currently have. I like to think of this as, this is like the Linfield marketplace. Linfield market, this is like a mini Linfield marketplace. They built the retail, they built the restaurants. The affordable housing is for, half-market affordable housing is for residents of Linfield or people who have relatives who live in Linfield, and they have that all worked out so that people there, and the marketplace actually has an outdoor function where they do skating in the winter and they do outdoor performances and that. So you get the idea, community feedback was very strong. One of the big things we know about was it was a zoning problem, we've already started to address that, which is good. This sewer package treatment plant, because we're not going to have sewage going down Main Street anytime too soon that I can see, but we're in a great spot to do that, so that's a lot covered. And then the community, so now I'm just going to skip ahead, you don't have this, but I do. You know, the community was asked within these people that came, you know, how do they feel about this? They were guiding this principle, right? And when they asked which blocks do you want to see development happen sooner, it was basically all around the Stop and Shop and 62 areas. When they were asked about, would you welcome, you know, condensed multifamily housing, like 80% were saying, yes, we would support that. If you talked about making the Main Street a walkable, livable area, again, about 80% of the people went for that. So it's been based on my experience, you know, talking to people, that a lot of people aren't aware of this study, a lot of people aren't aware of the implications of this study, and so I'm trying to bring it to your attention that this is something we should be thinking about, because now we're raising the question of the fire station and the town hall and what to do with that. So let me just get back on track here. So my call for action, this is what I'm bringing to your attention, is I suggest that we take the time to understand each of the five projects listed above, which is, and if you can hand out the summary sheets, that'd be great, same for you too, Rita, or David, if you have it. You know, we have the firehouse, we have the town hall, we have affordable housing, we have intergenerational community center, we have the new Main Street. Let's, at one point, let's bring this all out on the table. Let's everybody have a chance to express what's going on with each of these projects and how they might work together. And I'll give you one example. If we decide to raise this building and then decide to put the firehouse here and town hall here, we don't get the benefit of potentially moving this into the area that we're talking about. And that would create synergy within our town. That would be a missed opportunity. So while we have the land here, and it's easy to imagine just doing that, it may not be the best place to put it because it doesn't give you a there there. We know that we purposely, I mean, we could have gone for a less, we could have gone for affordable housing on Lowell Street. We decided collectively to actually let that be high-end price condos with the intention of maybe redirecting some of that money more towards affordable housing in Main Street. So anyways, I'll just do my calls of actions and I'm done, and I thank you for your time. Let's bring the stakeholders together to present and discuss these five proposals in an open, fair, and transparent forum. Let's really dig into the MPC study for the new Main Street and consider how the other objectives can be integrated at the same time, creating synergy and opportunity for all. Let's encourage our town departments and leaders, Board of Selectmen, CPC, EDC, CIT, Finance, Capital Improvements, to help identify priorities, and then let's survey the residents of North Reading to get their input before we go to town meeting, not during town meeting. If we need to bring in a consultant to help us do that, let's do that. Fourth, let's update the town master plan and take the time to interpret the results. It hasn't been done since 2004, and I know that's on the docket, so I'm aware of that. And fifth, let's ensure the feasibility study you're planning for the town hall, fire station integrates with all the five objectives and we get the most bang for our buck for doing the work. That, sorry if I took too much time, just wanted to get it out there. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman? Okay, just make a comment. First of all, thank you for pulling all of this together.
No problem.
And thank you for speaking about part of the community that needs to be heard and needs support, and you're doing that with ACT and the other programs that you're doing. So I appreciate that, and this is a wonderful starting point for the town to start looking more broadly at the population rather than restrictively.
That's its intent. Thank you.
Rich, I just think, again, thank you very much for your efforts, not just tonight, but previous efforts and your continuing efforts along with your colleagues over here. But the, I just want to assure you that I think that most everybody's on the same page. You know, while you see some proposals coming forward, one we will talk about a little bit tonight, doesn't mean that everybody here is like-minded in relation to, you know, let's take a look at the town hall and fire station today separately outside of something like this. There are some of us who think that it should be looked at more collectively. Comes to citing this particular location, you look at what we just did for rezoning there, we've got nine to 11 acres here that directly abut, the value of this economically is far more if we're not here. And again, if we're going to follow through on what we're looking to achieve here as far as Main Street, yes, creating a center of town, generally speaking, you'd like to have a town.
Is that, sorry if I took too much.
Mr. Chairman.
Just wanted to get it out there. Any questions?
Okay, just make a comment. First of all, thank you for pulling all of this together.
No problem.
And thank you for speaking about part of the community that needs to be heard and needs support. And, and you're doing that with ACT and the other programs that you're doing. So I appreciate that, and this is a wonderful starting point for the town to start looking more broadly at the population rather than restrictively.
That's its intent. Thank you.
Rich, I just think, again, thank you very much for your efforts, not just tonight, but previous efforts and your continuing efforts along with your colleagues over here. But the, I just want to assure you that I think that most everybody's on the same page. You know, while you see some proposals coming forward, one we will talk about a little bit tonight, doesn't mean that everybody here is like-minded in relation to, you know, let's take a look at the town hall and fire station today separately outside of something like this. There are some of us who think that it should be looked at more collectively. Comes to citing this particular location. You look at what we just did for rezoning there, we've got nine to eleven acres here that directly abut. The value of this economically is far more if we're not here. And again, if we're going to follow through on what we're looking to achieve here as far as Main Street, yes, creating a center of town, generally speaking, you'd like to have a town hall there. So I, I think there are a lot of like-minded individuals sitting on this board and, and other boards. So I don't think, I don't think you need to be as alarmed as maybe you are, which is okay. You know, and I'm glad you are.
You know what, I, you know, I was encouraged to bring this conversation up sooner than later. And I knew at some point we'd have this conversation. But I do hear things that are not the same. And I do hear people that, and when I say new Main Street, they look at me like, what are you talking about? You're crazy, man.
That's true.
And, and so, you know, that's come up enough where, you know, and again, at the end of the day, maybe the fire station and the town hall being here is the best idea, and I will support that, you know. But it's like, let's just have an objective, open discussion about it. Let's put things on the table, let's see what we can make happen.
I believe it's good, I believe those types of discussions will take place. I think there'll be forums that will look at things collectively. And I believe that you're going to, well, there may be differences, differences of opinion as to what we should be doing. I think we'll come to a consensus in relation to what's best for the community and what do we really want our community to look like a generation from now. And I, and I think we're heading in the right direction. We have a lot of good things happening.
Good.
And I appreciate your effort, I appreciate your speaking out. I appreciate you bringing it to the forefront, and I look forward to working with you.
Any other board members have a comment?
Yes.
I would just say the same, and, and I would also, I would say the same. Thank you for putting it all together and making all these points. And I'm the newest member here, but I also know that this, my colleagues have been working on strategic planning for several years now. And a lot of these things aren't done in the, you know, side room or back room. They're done at these public meetings and the plans online, like you said. So that's, a lot of these things are things that there's a strong desire to do. And definitely, we've all heard the same issues, especially keeping our seniors in place. They're being able to stay here, being able to move into something more affordable when they downsize in the community that they love. And that's kind of a repetitive thing that we, we are, if I can speak for it, we all hear that. And that is a concern for all of us, and addressing that need is something that we're all mindful of. I also agree with you, we don't even have the money yet. So it shouldn't be earmarked for this, that, or the other thing. And, you know, we really should act cautiously about it, because it's, it's, it's a wonderful thing for the town. It is a gift, yeah. And it's the good work of, you know, a lot of people in this, in this community that, that's happened. But we don't have it yet. So let's not spend it before we have it.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Agreed, we should really, you know, plan this, plan this.
The planning is really the biggest thing, yeah.
But I think this board has also had a lot of these things in mind for a long time now, for years now. Want, you know, recognizing some of these things, and maybe this will give us the opportunity to actually move forward in doing those things, which is great.
Yeah, because it's nice to wish, but if it isn't, you know, if you can't really do it, you know, just a wish, right?
Right.
So, yeah.
From my perspective.
And my group, and my group is.
What you talked about tonight, you're absolutely right from the point of view of, you know, this town's been a bedroom community for a long, long time. We've struggled through budget after budget, getting enough money into the school system. And here we are, we get a great opportunity from the state, our Economic Development Committee, which you were part of, come up with a great idea. And we end up, although we didn't get commercial development at the Berry property, we got something just as good, because it's going to have a negative, or very little impact, if any, on the school system. And we increase our, our tax revenue, and we have some capital money to start to work on some of these other projects. And some of them, you know, are, you know, clearly, you know, in our vision. You know, we're working on trying to get a sewer line extended down Conket Street, which would have a significant impact on opportunities there. Nothing would happen overnight, but the fact that it would be there would mean potentially a hotel, and then God knows what happens after that.
Yeah.
The idea of making the center, or a second center of North Reading on Main, on Route 28, like we have in Reading, and when you go to Andover, right, the traffic slows down considerably.
Yeah.
Right? And it's okay to have a little speed between the cities, but when you get there, it ought to slow down. I think all of these things are good for the community. And I think you're right, is that we have to look at the whole picture and then determine what's the best and most logical way of getting all these things done. Because they all can't be done at once.
I agree, totally.
And we could screw it up by heading off in the wrong direction.
Yeah, I just don't want to ignore, you know, like the obvious ones.
But I mean, to think that the board has already made up their mind, we haven't even discussed it in terms of, you know, what's next. And right now, as we head into town meeting, we could get through that. You know, after town meeting, perhaps it's time to then start to think through what the next steps are going to be.
Yep.
One thing at a time, and.
That's fine. Yeah, again, I felt like I might be jumping a little bit earlier, but it's better earlier than late.
No, it's fine.
And we didn't, we didn't want to, like, surprise you, you know, two months from now with whatever, you know.
But to your point is, is that, you know, we, we tend to spend, you know, a lot of time. A lot of people have put an awful lot of time and effort in and will continue to do so. And whilst, well, we get caught up talking to the same, talking to ourselves and not necessarily informing the public well enough. So that when you say the Main Street's concept, people go on, what are you talking about?
Right.
So, okay, we need to be reminded sometimes to push it out there, look for the feedback, and, good thing. Yeah, I appreciate you stepping forward.
Mr. Misery.
Bob, Bob.
Just, I've been trying to wave to you. Just a couple of things. First, this MPC study, you know, it's been done now for quite a while. And the participation by the community, I thought, was fantastic in this.
It's unbelievable.
And, you know, and I, I don't think it should just be put on a shelf and get dusty. I don't disagree with you. There's some things with, that's concerning to really execute it. To do eminent domain is something that, you know, this board would have to have a serious discussion on. And the reason that you see this warrant article that we haven't even really discussed yet either, it, it's just because we've got to get things going. And to do any kind of study and to really make some real concrete progress, you need to bring the experts in to help us figure out, when the word feasibility, you know, how we actually do this. But we've got to start somewhere. And I don't think it was ever intended to railroad this idea or any other idea. The intent was, okay, let's get started. And we don't need the J.T. Berry money, by the way, to do a feasibility study, okay? We can do this without it.
Yeah.
And the other thing, the last thing I'll leave you with, the Council on Aging, and as I, and I've said this many times, there is nothing that stops you from getting an RFP on the street today with this wonderful tunnel land that we have all over the place. At least get something out there to try to sell it to a developer that does senior housing or assistant living, and it doesn't cost us a penny to do it. And I would really hope that at some point, somebody's going to take the ball and run with it.
Yeah.
And I hope the Council on Aging would really push to have that done sooner than later, because we haven't really done much for the seniors in a long time. That would be a nice start.
Yeah, so the, so the big issue there, you know, and I don't even know the property, but the big issue there is that walkable, because they're going to lose their cars. They've got to be able to walk around. It's got to be like a walkable area. So if we put them over here or over there, and you require a car to do it, until Google comes up with a car, and she goes, put in your coordinates, and you're going to go to where you want to go, we have a problem. You know, and that's a, that's a consistent problem. And people lose their license, you know, it just happens all the time.
Yeah, but they all need a place to live.
So I don't want to put them, I don't want to put them out on La La Land, you know. It's, at least, those that can afford it can be out on La La Land. But those that can't afford it, you know, the core, the people that have been paying the property tax bills to put the kids through schools, we should be taking care of those people. Those are very important people to us. And I like what Linfield does. You get into our half-market housing because you were a Linfield resident. You know, that's, that's a very nice, attractive area, property. So, but I, you know, I'd like to talk to you about that more afterwards. I can promise, you know, with my group, I, I consider myself a pretty logical person. There's like twelve of us, you know, that meet all the time. So, you know, as we try to work together, I'm happy to support what you're doing and stay informed and, you know, be a, be a spark plug for whatever you're trying to do. So you don't have to get the word out yourselves. We're kind of working on the marketing and the getting the word out, and we all share the same interests. So it's, it's easy to get the word out.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and values.
Okay, the next item on our budget right now.
Seems that way, right?
Is to discuss the June Town Meeting warrant and vote warrant article recommendation. Mr. Yule, how do you want to handle this?
Mr. Chairman, through you, we had intended, I had intended that we would have a PowerPoint presentation to go through this evening for a variety of reasons. We weren't able to do that. However, we do have motions in there for the articles for which I believe the board may be prepared to make recommendations this evening.
Okay.
And so I would suggest that we take them in order. They begin with article number one, which relates to the.
These are motions?
These are, I'm going from the motions themselves. That's probably the most efficient way for us to go through them. On page two of the packet, of the motions.
First one is number six.
Article one.
Article one is the.
Yes, it's article one.
So I just would defer, I defer to the finance director, but I don't believe we have any identified transfers at this point in time. But it's likely that we may identify something when we get to town meeting, so the board, certainly could make a recommendation at this point, but we don't have the amounts to report this evening.
Recommended town meeting?
I would suggest that since we don't have a number, we just pass over the article for now. Unless you have a.
Recommended town meeting.
This one, I would recommend a town meeting.
Recommended town meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Town Meeting, Article One, Fiscally in 2017 Budget Amendment.
Wait a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose, unanimous. Article two.
The snow and ice deficit, defer to the finance director, but I believe we have a number that we're working on, we're working with.
The number that we're holding for the snow and ice deficit is $60,000 from free cash. That number is not, you know, definite at this point, but that will be more than enough. I believe right now, the current deficit is $48,000 and change. So there are some bills that the DBW director has on his desk that have yet to be paid. So I believe at town meeting, this way the recommendation should be made. We'll have a better idea by then.
What are the wishes of the board? I have no problem recommending.
I don't either.
Even though we don't have the final number, it's something that has to be paid.
Recommending, if you paid out of free cash?
Yes, it's out of free cash.
Yeah.
The motion would only be to recommend it this time.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Two, Fund Fiscally in 2017 Snow and Ice Deficit.
Second.
Second, Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Article three.
This will be appropriating funds into the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund to the finance director.
The amount that we are proposing to transfer into the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund is $1,005,000. $1,005,000, let me just confirm that.
It's what?
It is $1,051,637. And the funding sources would be $851,637 from free cash and $200,000 from the FY17 Debt Service Operating Budget.
What are the wishes of the board?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. The last part, the very last part.
$200,000 from the FY17 Debt Service Operating Budget.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important to note that the recommendations by the finance director and the town administrator are in keeping with having a balanced budget for the June Town Meeting. And the numbers have already been shared with the finance planning team and the school department. Everything seems to fit.
Are we going to get them? Do we have, I haven't seen them.
What's that?
The fit numbers.
So can we have a motion to?
Hold on, it's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have that in our packet?
We have a presentation this evening to reflect the discussion that took place at today's financial planning team meeting, which I believe the finance director's going to review under the next item.
Can we move to recommend?
Mr. Chairman, I must have shot. Mr. Chairman, I move to.
I don't know how we can do that. Well, shouldn't we see the numbers before we recommend something?
What are you looking for, Michael, I'm sorry.
Well, you want me to prove something I haven't, you want me to prove something based on something that we haven't seen? Only you two have seen it, and you've.
Oh, the balance budget.
The balance budget.
Yeah, I don't know how you did it. I don't, you know, and I mean, I, you know, I don't want to be, I don't want to sound rude here, but I think it would be respectful for us to see it, before we have to agree on this. So I'd recommend that we approve this at town meeting.
How about if we postpone further discussion this, this agenda item until after the budget discussion?
Presentation, if that will.
Through the budget presentation first, I think that's more appropriate.
I'd feel more comfortable with that.
Yeah.
This one item or?
Mr. Chairman, through you, again, I didn't want to tell the board how to conduct its business, but I do know that there are folks here for the discussion of one particular article, because the board want to consider discussing that article while they're here so that if they don't wish to stay through the budget discussion, they could excuse themselves.
Sure, which one was that? Feasibility study?
Feasibility study, Article.
Twenty-six?
What do we got?
Town Hall Fire Feasibility?
That's correct, yes.
Twenty-six?
So again, I don't know whether the board desires to have a discussion at this point. I mean, there's been some reference made in the fact that we've not had much discussion.
I won't give a talk about that one, but I agree with Mr. President, we should, we'll make some more of these financial recommendations, that the board be fully informed as far as.
We could come back to that as well, I mean, that's, I just.
I mean, this one here, I think, I think this is going to be more philosophical than dollars and cents.
Yeah, well, it's, again, it's one of, Mr. Chairman, through you, of course. And I'm the one to push for this article, because it has nothing really to do with a hundred percent of, knowing that we're going to have an opportunity to have the sale of the J.T. Berry. It isn't about spending that money. This is, just goes along with the commitment that we've made to the fire department, that we have to make some type of decision for the future of that building or, or how we're going to address the fire calls being on this side of town more, around seventy-five percent or more. And we talked about a West Side Station, and sooner or later, we have to make some decision, especially with bringing a new facility here with a thousand people on this side of town is only going to increase the call volume in this side of town. So, you know, in something like this, it usually typically takes three to five years for us to really come to fruition. So the, the concept of asking for money for a feasibility study was to get the ball rolling. And I, I just don't see why we wouldn't want to get started. But if, you know, the majority of the board feels that this is a little too soon, then so be it. But I felt we owe it to the community when we went and fought, or not fought, but asked for the permission to sell the J.T. Berry to the Polty Homes, the concern about public safety was one of them. And this is just following through on that commitment. And let's face it, town hall, where we're moving around walls to fit people into closets. It can't, you know, we can't continue to do that. And the building's a little tired, and I think it's a little sick as well, but I'm not going to go there. It's kind of my pitch on it. I think we have an ample opportunity here to make some progress on this subject.
I think we're getting a little disorganized here.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman.
What is the article on the study? Was the article on?
Twenty-six.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, did I jump ahead? I thought we were on Article twenty-six.
Yeah, no, no, it kind of was, sort of.
That's my, my mistake, Mr. Chairman, I.
No, I mean, I wasn't prepared that the board was going to be complete with its deliberations this evening. I'm only suggesting it be discussed because the folks here that wish to discuss it.
At this point, I think we should start discussing these articles and have Liz make the presentation on the budget where it stands.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We certainly can do that, Mr. Chairman.
I apologize, I, since the.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
To what?
If I may. I, I think the, the intent here was, based on the input from the TA, was to possibly discuss the warrant article number twenty-six, because there were people here.
No, I, I clearly understand that, but we're jumping around. Michael wants to take a look at what the budget, how, how the budget get balanced. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
All right?
But, Mr. Misery, I apologize to interrupt, but I believe it was just, the town manager, town administrator's recommendation was, rather than have these folks here wait till we get to Article twenty-six, there is nothing in this budget that's going to be presented to us that's going to affect our decision on this. I think this is a, that's all, that's the only reason. And I mistakenly thought you gave us the okay to go to Article twenty-six, which you didn't clearly. So I apologize. So I probably caused most of this confusion.
No, it's the TA's fault.
I thought.
I think actually, I think, I think I let him. That's okay.
All right, so there's, I don't have a copy of Article twenty-six in the.
Oh, you don't?
It isn't in the motion.
It's in the warrant.
Oh, okay, all right. Looking at motions, okay.
That's what I was looking at, too. That's why I got a little.
So we are talking about. So, we are talking about Article twenty-six?
Yes.
That is?
Liz is getting her steps in.
I apologize.
May I?
All right.
Mr. Chairman, through you, so a little bit of history from my perspective with regard to the warrant article. I, I traced the origin of the article back to the board's strategic planning discussion, which took place in November or late October of last year, well before we ever really had any concept of how, of the magnitude of the Berry property transaction. It was tied to what I believe is a need for a long-term planning effort with regard to the town hall. And it was also somewhat tied to the potential for the town hall to be part of an overall economic development strategy in the commercial corridor that we've studied, through the study that was referenced in Mr. Wellner's presentation. And some of the discussion that, that, that the EDC has had with regard to, excuse me, that the board has had with regard to looking towards economic development. So from my perspective, it originated, going back to the, the town hall discussion that took place in the strategic planning meeting, and something I felt that in order to advance that discussion, a warrant article was provided, and to the point that was made, the funding of the warrant article is not dependent upon the Polte sale at all, it's proposed to be funded by free cash. To a certain extent, I guess it does relate to the revenue plan, certainly, because it's a use of funding at the June town meeting. But I, I felt that it's a long-term planning process that we would be undertaking, and that the, the time was appropriate to advance that discussion. Concurrent to that, we had some discussion at the February twenty-fifth budget hearing, where we discussed the needs of the, of the fire department and the issue of not only location but size, the apparatus floor, et cetera. The things that were all discussed to some extent on and off in capital planning and other meetings. And it seemed to me that to prompt the board to consider these two items together was the appropriate next step. That said, there are any number of other items that are capital in nature and related to town facilities for that matter, that have been identified in the presentation this evening. Certainly, there are a number of different ways, some communities have conducted feasibility study for multiple town-owned properties or buildings, with the goal of trying to allocate space accordingly across many different departments. So, you know, that's certainly an optional we could look at. But the, the reason that it appeared in the draft of the warrant, the last meeting, was because of those conversations dating back to November, from my perspective, and the conversation that took place in February.
Mr. Yul.
Yeah. I love the thought process that this might be a little bit too early. Because I'm not sure if we really know whether this is the best location for a fire station.
What, here? There's no location.
There's no location, that's what the feasibility studies are about.
Mentioned it, but we've never talked about that.
Right.
No, that's not, that's not actually fair, because we have talked about it on this site a couple of times, and that's.
It's been definitely brought up in conversation, no doubt. That's what the feasibility study is to determine where.
It says town hall fire station, which we talked about being here.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Adjacent to the, the other apartment complex.
We thought we've had the property back here.
Exactly.
But I, I guess, I, I don't, I guess, maybe I don't understand the, the, the warrant then. Is the warrant to say just the idea of doing a, funding a town hall and fire station someplace in town? Or is it here? I would think that we would need to know where we're gonna put it before we do a feasibility study on the structure itself. That's what I would think, but the location, I think, is, needs to be determined first.
Mr. McGilbert would like to answer.
My view of it is, and I don't see the fact that the article says the study for the town hall fire station meeting, it has to be the same building, number one. Number two is that what we're looking at is, what do we need? What kind, how much space do we need?
Right.
And that kind of stuff, right, and then, you know, and what are the potential locations that we could put these structures?
Right.
And just to have that information as part of an overall plan of, what do we do first, and second, and third, and fourth, then we, we do know that there's an impact on the fire department associated with what we're doing, you know, just at the Berry. And we also know that there's not much we can do at the existing fire station, in terms of improving space, there's no space for parking. The building, you know, for those that have toured upstairs where they live, you have to scratch your head a little bit. And, you know, do we, and we're putting some money in there because we have to, but, you know, do we wanna put a lot of money in there, like we did for the police station? I don't think it makes a lot of sense in this particular case. So I think we need to get that information together as part of our overall planning process. And it's not that, at least I had never envisioned that we're gonna tear this building down, and we're gonna move town hall to someplace in the sky while we wait to build a new town hall. Fire station doesn't make sense, we did get a proposal from an architect, we had some work done a number of years ago, I was on the board then, so somewhere in the past thirteen years, where they looked at building a new town hall in the back lot here, because we do own some land here, and then tear this down afterward. But, you know, I, I think it's time to take another look at the whole thing, and, and get some kind of measure what's needed. But the fact that that's going in there and I'm willing to support it, doesn't mean that tomorrow I'm gonna say, hey, we passed the Berry money, we're gonna take that money, we're gonna build this. It makes no sense to me at this point. Because we don't have enough information, and I think what Rich brought to the table is important, because I think we have to look at the whole big picture, right, and decide how we can leverage the money we get for the Berry to increase our commercial base to the point where we can give some tax relief finally
Yes.
to those people that have lived in town long in the, in the little capes, right, that are in my age, right?
Yep.
That don't have an income stream and are struggling, right? So, I definitely would, I'm in support of this, it's not coming out of any Berry money.
Right.
And I think it at least puts enough information to give us a better picture of the alternatives that we might have. And then we can start the saw, and maybe we need to get together with the group and have a big meeting and discussion about this at some point in the future, the near future.
Sounds good, yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah, that's fine, okay, so I, I think it's clear that we're all on the same page, that it's, doesn't necessarily have to do with this facility or this location, but it's to identify a location, and then work our way towards a, a cost of a, of a given structure or structures. So I just wanna make sure, because it didn't read that way, and if I read Rich correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, that I think that you're, at least that was the perception I got, that they were talking about here in this location. I don't know if that was your thought process.
That's what I originally heard was, we were gonna do it here.
Right, okay, so, so.
I think that there may be other locations, and it may not necessarily be married up.
Right, so the.
It could be together or not be together.
So the perception of this was this location, but apparently, I mean, I'm in agreement with you, and I think that's what we all feel, that it's the, find out where first and.
I'm looking at a feasibility study to define what we need.
Right.
What we need for town hall, for today, and to cover projected growth, same thing with the fire department. And, you know, how we, and what we do associated, we have a fire department here, we're gonna build a new fire department somewhere else, and what we're gonna do with the old fire department, are we gonna shut it down completely, or are we gonna use it as a backup, or whatever? And I think that's what's important, is to have that information, so that we can make some better decisions about where to go, rather than just say, hey, we're gonna build a fire station over at the stop and shop parking lot or something, you know, and, you know, that's not right, and it certainly doesn't get us to where we really need to be.
Well, you just jumped over, that's why I was just responding.
Michael and then Catherine.
Catherine had her hand up first.
Then Catherine and then Michael.
I read it the same way as you, too, so, and I, I know we did talk about, actually talk about this particular parcel that we're on, being a, I do recall this, I don't recall if it was in EDC or at BOS, but this particular parcel being a potential parcel to have as a, you know, the intergenerational center, a senior center, veteran center, town hall, just kind of a, a city center, a town center, basically, that, that it seemed to be significant amount of land, although I don't know how far it goes backwards, not, you know, either wetlands. Wetlands or conservation lands, but that, that this, this parcel should be focused in on, too, because we own it, and what's that, I wouldn't wanna limit the feasibility to Main Street hard, or I'd wanna, want this particular parcel, we own so much of it, to be, to be looked at, especially because of the eminent domain aspect of Main Street, and that, that has a lot of, it's water all over the place there, too. But I read it the same way, but my concern is, who's doing the study, who's participating, how much is it gonna cost out of free cash? And the way that I read this, I would not wanna raise taxes to do this, or, or, you know, I would want it to come out of free cash if we had the availability of free cash funds, and what do, what do you suggest is the amount that we're, we'd be looking at if, if through you, Mr. Chairman, I could ask the TA that?
So, be looking at funding out of free cash, in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for the study. And then we would go through a procurement process to identify a firm to assist with the study for the facility or facilities. And that was my intention, my recommendation.
Michael?
Yeah, so again, the concept would be, from, with that money, you start to generate your requirements, so I've met with fire chief Warnock and deputy chief Galvin and a few of their staff members, and, you know, we had some initial discussions, and said, you know, you need to step back and look at this. Don't look at it for twenty-twenty, you really look at it like twenty-forty, right, the future. And then try to build those demands, because they'll tell you right now, even with the studies that we've already done, that we need to do something on this side of town, right? I think we've done two studies now, and I'm sure deputy chief Galvin would be more than happy to come and brush those off and present them to the board at any time, so we know we need to do something, but now we can actually figure out what the requirements are. Talk about square footage, because fire trucks are getting larger, they're not getting smaller, and so the facility we have now could be the issue. But those are the kinds of things we need to generate, and then once we have all that data, then we can decide where the best location is, because I don't disagree with Mr. O'Leary, that maybe we also need to do a study on this property, and how it relates to the commercial base, and maybe it's better off not having it, and we generate this as a new commercial base, I don't know, but those things all need to generate after we figure out what our requirements are. Because this is ten point four acres, this may be too big when we get done with this study, I don't know. But I think you can't really figure out unless you have what the heck you need documented, then from there, the next logical step is to do the analysis where and if we're gonna spend more money to acquire, or we have to go into eminent domain to achieve what we want. So I'm just asking that please support this, allow us to get to this next step. And I think you'll find that the fire chief has done a lot of work, or at least they're prepared to provide a lot of feedback to help us get this going, and I'm sure the town administrator, I know you've only been here three years or so, right? Time flies by, but you see this building, you can see the demands, I mean, you're literally putting walls up and hallways to build, and tie it into a closet for people. You know kind of where you're gonna be now, and probably in twenty years from now, based on our growth plans, so, off my soapbox. You know, by the way, I gotta make sure, I don't know what you guys are reading, maybe I have something different, but it says here, appropriate by transferring from unexpected funds remaining in warrant articles of previous years, okay, or appropriated by transfer from available sources of funds. So, I, I, maybe I have a different warrant article than everyone else, because I don't know where.
I think that when the articles were put in, the funding wasn't all figured out, and a lot of the articles would read that way, Michael.
That's the generic language that we use.
Generally, the articles cover all options.
Generally, when we write a funding article, we leave the options open.
It's in there.
Michael, did you hear that?
Yes, I did, no, but it sounded like you, the articles that you guys had didn't have those other words in there, you just saw the taxation.
Raised by appropriated available funds.
So I'm sure.
Okay.
Are we all squared away?
I'm, I am.
Yes, Mr. O'Leary.
I'm not squared away, I'm not so sure, but I, I think we're, I think we can wait till October to make sure that we, as a board, have a clear understanding exactly what we're looking for and why, and I think we all have a little different idea. And I don't think we need to rush this right now, again, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight, it's not something that's gonna happen, you know, three years from now, I don't think. So I, I think if we're going to, obviously from a town standpoint, you know, town operational standpoint, we need to know what our needs are going to be, and evaluate those, but on overall strategic planning purposes, maybe we wanna incorporate some other things to, as we, as we approach this. So to me, I just think it's a little bit premature, again, we, this is the most discussion we have had about this in years.
Yep.
In years, by the way, we're talking about west side stations for forty years.
Yeah.
But things have changed.
Absolutely, things have changed, but so, so again, I, I don't see the need to put this on our plate this soon, when we have other major issues pending before the June town meeting, that we wanna get support for in moving forward. I think those are more important at this particular point, I, I've gone, I'm not in support of taking this up now. Again, maybe six months from now is, is a good idea, a good time, but I think we have an awful lot on our plate right now that we need to address, and, which are all near term, particularly in relation to the MWRRA, water projects, a whole host of issues. And to me, I think we should just concentrate our efforts on that, rather than putting one more issue on our plate this quickly, and I don't think putting it off till October, or even next June, is gonna be that harmful. Again, and I don't disagree that it's important, feasibility study is important, but I think our administration has an awful lot to deal with. And we're not, I'm not clear as to what, what we're gonna be calling for in the feasibility study. And I'm not gonna agree on it tonight, I don't think.
Any other board members feel the same way at this point?
I just wanna hear clarification from Steve. Mr. Chairman, I understand your point, but I don't see how it affects June town meeting and the warrants, I, I don't see that, I'm trying to grasp.
We're, we're, we're asking the community to absorb an awful lot of information with a whole host of issues that we're facing as a community trying to move forward on things. I think we should be a little more focused on the things that need to be addressed immediately right now, in order to move this forward, and not confuse the issues, not make people think, oh, here we go, and spend another seventy-five thousand dollars on this, when they're asking us to, you know, build a, you know, a water treatment plant, and fight into the MWRRA, and a whole host of other issues and initiatives that we've made a substantial amount of progress on. I, I think there's only so much that we can expect the public to absorb and support, and we have some, and I'm looking to keep the community cohesive and together, rather than add fodder or concern in relation to how we're expending our funds for specific projects and big ideas, I mean, this, this is not, yes, it's long-term, but it's not a cheap project, it's not a cheap undertaking, and I think if you talk to most of the people out there, there's a concern as to how much we're biting off right now, and I think we need to focus on those issues which are going to glean the the most benefit for the community long-term, and get those, get those initiatives through, this can wait.
What initiatives are you referring to, besides water?
Water, again, it'll be sewage, the others gonna be handled with the benefits, we're gonna have to handle a whole host of issues, I mean, we have a lot going, we have a lot on our plate, there's a lot of things going on, and I think it's gonna cost people, and I think people are rightfully gonna be a bit concerned in relation to how quickly we're trying to move our initiatives forward, I think we have to be concerned, we have to be cognizant of it. And again, I, I just think, right now, I don't think we presented a very good advocacy necessarily, or cohesive message to the community on this particular issue yet. We haven't had enough time to discuss it openly, and in public, and we're not gonna have much time between now and the first week of June to do so.
Yeah, we haven't talked about wastewater either.
We've been talking about wastewater for a long time, years.
There's nothing in here about wastewater.
Okay, so, I don't know how the rest of the board members feel, Steve, but I wouldn't have a problem delaying this. wouldn't have a problem delaying this until October, because I think it would give us some time after town meeting to spend a little more time, perhaps have a meeting with these people and see what else we should be thinking about as part of this whole thing. It may not result in having to do a study, but with some of these other items. But I think we ought to have that conversation. So, but I, I would only support that provided that we have some agreement that we wouldn't go past October, because I think we need the information. And I agree that, you know, I think once you have the information, you get a better understanding, you know, we still may not be in a situation where we're going to do anything about it for several years. Because I think that what's most important about the revenue from Berry Project is to use that as leverage to continue to grow our commercial base. And, you know, we know what that is, it's water, it's sewer, it's, uh, it's those kinds of things that will attract business people, more business people to the community and develop the community such that we start to relieve the tax burden of the homeowners of Northridge. And I think that's been our goal for a long, long time. It's not a change in anything. It's just that, for the first time, as a result of the efforts, uh, that came out of the Berry Project and the work that Michael did and, uh, state representative and the community, I mean, the Commercial Development Committee and, and the Board of Selectment and everyone else that put some time and effort into this, they finally give us an opportunity to make some, you know, I've been on the board for thirteen years and we've struggled with the budget processes every year, and we've been limited. And all of a sudden now, we have an opportunity and we have to make sure we take the best advantage of the opportunity. And that doesn't exclude getting this kind of information, because I think we have to put an overall plan, a plan maybe a ten-year plan, some of these things may be ten years out. But I think if we start to get some idea of what we need and how we're going to go about doing it, I think we're all better.
And again, just to follow up and add, maybe going down a little different path, and maybe we're on the same page here, because we really haven't discussed it, is if we're talking about forming a Main Street and a new downtown and having a public facility within that, within that area, we may be talking about eminent domain. We may be talking about eminent domain in order to facilitate the development of packaged treatment plants, so that additional economic development on this Main Street area can take place and allowing users to tie in. Because we cannot necessarily expect or, uh, expect private owners to buy into putting a packaged treatment plant on their own property and having their neighbors tie in. So, those types of things are the things that we're going to be talking about and thinking about long-term. Again, this facility and the location or relocation of this, along with the fire station, will all factor into those things. So, it's, uh, but those are all costly.
Mr. Musari, if I could, I just want to add, but the goal here was, and I'm okay- The goal here was to build up what those requirements truly are. So, when you know what size building you need, you know, the type of building that the town administrator believes he's going to need, do we want to tie in something associated with adding a senior senator to it? All those things tied to the, building the requirements, then it makes it easier to go out and find the location, because now we know what it needs to fit. So, if the fire department says they need five bays, and they need ten thousand square feet to do that, and they need a one-floor building or a two-floor building, we can get all that stuff worked out. That's what needs to take place. This isn't about circumventing or putting aside another project. This is just about building the requirements so we can move forward, because these things have been discussed a long time. It's been tossed around a long time, but we haven't really defined exactly what those requirements are. That's all this was about. But again, if the majority of the board wants to push itself into October, it doesn't hurt anything. No one's at harm. I, I'm not trying to say there is, just trying to keep the ball moving.
That's what I'm saying. I said, I could support out there, if, if the board members wanted to hold back on this and wanted to move into what Steve is saying, I could support that, given that we basically say, okay, come October, we're going to put that article in. By then, we may have to refine a little bit. And you're right, I think-
How are we going to be refined? We're not going to have any information. Nothing's going to change between now and October.
Right.
We won't know what the, what we need. That's what this is about.
I wouldn't support waiting until October for some of the similar reasons that Steve has noted, and that's related to all the other things that come on a fruited town meeting that we have to make decisions on and, uh, where's the rest of the board on this?
I, I don't see why we're, this, this, this itself is almost a year old. And again, I'm the newest member here, but this has been discussed in strategic planning, the two strategic planning meetings with this board. EDC's been identifying town parcels. I think that we have a number of different individuals quite capable of participating in what they've already accumulated for information to be able to get this movement along. So, I don't, I don't think that we're biting off one that we can chew, we're trying to get a direction here, and, and I, I think that we should, we should move it forward, because there's been an awful lot of participation from an awful lot of different individuals in committees and commissions here that want to see things being considered and moving forward. I'm not disagreeing with you that there's not a lot of significant things that we are moving forward on, but I think that, that, I think that this is one that, at least from what I'm hearing from feedback, people want, you know, want us to move forward with some of this planning concept.
All right, so we've, right now, we've got two things. We have an article that, and we can leave them and not pass over any, in the warrant for, uh, for June town meeting, or we can pass it over and put the article in for October. So, where's everybody? Give me, raise your hand if you-
I think the October gives us more time to privilege this coordinated effort together and create a, a more clear vision and plan for what we're looking to do. There's no doubt that a lot of people have looked at different aspects of what we're talking about here, but I don't believe that there's been a, a clear public airing in, of it, in a, in an organized fashion to move forward. I just think, if we're going to bite, bite this off and move forward with it, I think we should do it with some more, um, public meeting on clearer understanding as to where we're heading with it. Again, this is the most discussion we've had about it. You know, so, to me, I just think, October, again, I'm not looking to, to kick this down the road any further than, than we need to, but I just think, I don't believe there's been enough, uh, discussion. I don't think that, uh, the parties with the vested interests or concerns have necessarily been able to air it publicly, to help formulate public opinion in support of it. And I think putting it off till October would, would allow us to do that in a more organized fashion and gender more support.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Yul.
Yes. Our next strategic planning meeting is, would be when?
Probably right after October town meeting, I think.
Yep.
Typically.
We're trying to get it done before the town administrator sits down and discusses the budget objectives of the following year. So, look, we've beat this thing to death at this point, right? If you're in support of keeping it in, they just raise your hand, so we know where we are. And if you're okay with moving into October, raise your hand. Jeff, you haven't done anything, so we're all-
You have to pick one.
I've been going like this and this, and you know, I, I don't, I don't see a problem keeping it in, and I don't see a problem pushing it to, to October.
Well, make a decision so we can move on. We have a lot of things on the agenda here.
Hey, I have a power play here, let me use it. I think, I think we can go with October. Okay? I'm okay with October.
So, I think it's three to two to move it to October.
So, pass it on, pass over? Or just not move on?
Pass over the article.
Pass over.
So, we move to remove it from the, from the warrant?
Yeah, but the warrant's already there.
Nope.
Oh, the warrant hasn't been signed, I'm sorry.
No, that was the-
Yeah, it was the, yeah, just to remove it from the warrant.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to remove Article twenty-six from the warrant.
Second.
Second, Mr. Yul.
And include it in the October town meeting warrant.
All in favor?
Second.
Opposed?
No.
Motion fast is treated to.
Mr. Chairman, I don't actually have a motion on that, so will you capture that?
No, Steve just made it. Okay, what do you think you'd like us to go next, Michael?
I think the budget presentation would be appropriate. Ms. Rourke. As Ms. Rourke is approaching the podium, through you, Mr. Chairman, so, again, as I put in the meeting notes, we had a financial planning team meeting this morning, where Ms. Rourke and I finalized our recommendations with regard to the budget, at least where things stand right now. Uh, this presentation's updated to reflect that conversation, as I committed to in the meeting notes. And then we have some recommendations with regard to the overall reconciliation from the town's perspective of the operating budget. With that, turn it over to Ms. Rourke.
Okay, um, so, we have updated the FY eighteen revenue plan up to represent new figures that have been added into other financing sources. So, the last presentation that we had on this was on April third, and here we are on April twenty-fourth with some updated figures. So, it's pretty straightforward, we've gone through these. Um, you have the tax levy, new growth, those figures have not changed since the last presentation. Uh, neither has debt, uh, the debt service for debt exclusions, that number has not changed. The numbers that have changed, that have been updated, would be state aid, um, for chapter seventy. Uh, this is according to the House budget that was released a few weeks ago. However, the House budget did not recommend any change in unrestricted state aid, so that number has stayed the same. And as I said, chapter seventy increased slightly. Um, but overall, our local aid, which includes unrestricted, unrestricted general government aid, chapter seventy, uh, state-owned land, library offset receipts, and, um, veterans' benefits reimbursements, was a reduction of probably about five thousand dollars. Uh, chapter seventy increased twenty-four, but veterans' benefits decreased thirty thousand, so it was in the mid, you know, maybe fifty-five hundred was the decrease. Local receipts has stayed the same, and the biggest change would be other financing sources, which we were discussing within Article three, under the transfer to the capital improvement stabilization fund. This has, um, increased since the April third meeting by three hundred and fifty-one thousand six thirty-seven. We come down to the bottom part, the budget section. The fixed cost total has decreased since our April third meeting, and the decrease was driven, um, by a reduction in the general liability and property insurance. There was, um, a credit that we were able to use, um, to offset the FY eighteen budget of approximately thirty thousand dollars. And, um, there was also an increase in workers' compensation insurance, but overall, it was a, a slight decrease. So, the town's level service budget, um, is noted there, as well as the school's level service budget, which was presented, I believe, at the April tenth workshop that they had. So, currently, as of today, the school's budget gap is sixty-six thousand, and the town has, um, a surplus of fifty-seven thousand. And we'll, we'll get into the fifty-seven thousand in two more slides.
And let, let just, let me comment. I attended the school workshop this afternoon, and they closed the sixty-six thousand dollar gap by making some adjustments mostly, in fact, they're all basically in expense items.
That's great. Great news.
Yeah, they're, they've taken some risk, of course, but they have balanced the budget based on the results of the financial planning team meeting. There's potentially something that could occur if you, you know, you read the, the complete House budget, the, uh, now I'm going to think of the, the funds that get paid for the special-
The circuit breaker?
Circuit breaker. And the House budget is budgeted at four hundred percent.
Mm-hmm.
Whether or not that means too much for them, because there's always a year delay.
Correct.
But there's potentially maybe some help there, which might allow them to put some of the things back.
That would be good.
So, that's where we are there.
Very good.
And I, I take it that the numbers we talked about this morning included the House budget for the chapter seventy increase?
That is correct, yes.
Which is about, what, thirty-eight, forty grand, I think?
No, the chapter seventy increase for the House budget was twenty-four thousand and change.
Twenty-four, okay, all right. Yes, Jim?
Yes. Liz, just a quick, on other finances, I thought I heard you said there was an increase of about three hundred thousand dollars plus, but I'm, I'm seeing fifty, five, yeah, five hundred and-
Those two columns are comparing FY seventeen to FY eighteen. That's last year over this year.
Yeah.
I'm talking, the increase that I'm specifying, it has to do with the April third presentation for FY eighteen.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Just quickly on the school side, so, they are no longer going to explore laying off or replacing the custodians with an outside service? That's not on the table, or is it off the table?
The part that, uh, it's interesting you bring that up, because a gentleman was out in the, I don't know if he's still here, but, uh, he was out in the corridor and he wanted to talk to us about replacing the custodians at the school, I see he's in the wrong location. But the part they're replacing is the, is the evening cleaning aspect, I believe, it's not the entire custodian workforce, at least that's my understanding. I don't know any more than that, though.
Okay.
And I don't know if they've changed their mind on that or not.
Thank you.
Okay. So, this is just a quick snapshot of, um, some potential free cash uses that are, have to do with the monetary warrant articles that we are discussing this evening. And these, um, have not changed, with the exception of the snow and ice reserve. At the April third, um, meeting, when we gave this presentation, the snow and ice, um, amount that we were carrying was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've now reduced that to sixty thousand dollars. And you can also see that the debt capital stabilization, uh, we had been carrying five hundred thousand there as a transfer in, and that is where the three hundred and fifty-one thousand six thirty-seven comes into play. You know, at one point, we had been carrying five hundred thousand for snow and ice, then we reduced it to one fifty, and now we've reduced it to sixty thousand. So, these are potential, uh, but as, as we know now, the town hall fire station study will come off of this list. Any questions? So, through the budget hearings that we've had, um, whether they were the Saturday budget hearing or, um, the three Monday night, uh, budget hearings, some of these items have, have come up, and the town administrator and I have made note of them and made a list, um, with one exception of one item that has come up through the capital process, as well as some notifications that we've received, um, from Verizon, which that would be the last item. I will let the town administrator speak to these, uh, budget adjustments.
Thank you, Liz. So, just going from our notes and from some things that have developed over the past few months since we started the budget hearing, there were a series of recommendations that were offered the board this evening for, um, finalizing the budget with, uh, the final actions to be taken at the May eighth meeting, two weeks from this evening. So, I'll just take them from the top. Uh, we've been working with the Public Works Department with regard to some, um, updates to the use of technology in the department. There was some discussion that took place at the budget hearing, uh, back in, uh, February. And, uh, at this point, based on the available funds, we're recommending that the, a fifty percent share of, uh, an update to the technology used for the time card system come out of the general fund. This would be matched with a fifty percent share that would come out of the water enterprise as well, for a total of sixteen thousand dollars, and that's based on the quotes that the Public Works Department has identified. The second item, you remember from the discussion, the department had in there a couple of spreader control updates that would allow us to reduce the uses of, uh, salt for, uh, treatment for ice and preventative treatment. And, uh, credit Mr. Lafferty, who was in the audience today, for the success of that program and the decrease in the volume that we're using. This would allow us to fully outfit the vehicles that currently participate in, uh, sanding operations, assault dispenser, dispensing, uh, alter, uh, operations, in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars.
Mr. Yul.
Yeah, all five?
This would do all of the trucks, that's correct.
Great.
Uh, this with what's already in the budget would do.
Right.
All the trucks.
That's great, that's great, Liz, thank you.
Uh, the building department salary pool, um, we do have a forecast of retirement taking place in the spring of next year. This would allow us to bring on a successor in the department to work alongside, uh, the department head for, uh, for a period of four weeks, approximately. head for a period of four weeks, approximately. The EDC CPC professional services appropriation, again, based on the board's discussion. Much of the work and the activities of the EDC has been funded out of the JT Berry appropriation that we had, which was specific to that, to that project. This would effectively be some seed money for the continued function of the EDC as it potentially transitions into other avenues over the next year or so, in the amount of $2,500. And the last and candidly the most difficult item to discuss is public safety communications. So the board members may be aware that we had, going back two years now, a pretty significant capital project to replace the current copper wire-based communication system for our public safety radios with a so-called microwave system. And that's not microwave the appliance in your kitchen, but microwave the use of microwave communication between the towers located on our existing water towers and in High Points in town, as well as two additional locations to maintain and improve our radio communications for our police and fire department, and to a certain extent our DPW as well. This proposal was initially tied to the fact that, well, two things. First, to expand our system to include two new proposed sites, we would need to update the infrastructure that's currently located at the police and fire station so as to accommodate additional sites, because that existing equipment is essentially maxed out in terms of the number of sites it can host. But second, secondly related to that was some information that we had going back a few years, that Verizon may potentially be phasing out its use and reliance on copper line within cities and towns in Massachusetts. And despite multiple conversations with representatives of Verizon over the past few years, where they indicated that that was not going to be the case, in a letter sent at the beginning of the wintertime and then updated again at the end of the wintertime, they relayed that they were effectively going to be, or at first, no longer maintaining, and then subsequently removing the infrastructure here in town for radio communication. So it's a legacy system, it's been here for decades, and it's tied to copper line. I don't think anyone's necessarily doubting the fact that there may be a more reliable or updated technology for communication out there. But we're concerned with regard to the notice and with regard to the timing of this. They've indicated to us that they may be completing removing the copper line system as soon as this December. So with regard to that, it's caused the Capital Improvement Planning Committee to look closely at not only the improving the equipment and potentially additional sites, but also this large-scale capital project to replace the communication system as a whole with a town-operated system. However, as a precaution, in case we don't go down that path, there is an option available to us from Verizon for replacing the copper lines with the more expensive T1 connection line. And that number there, 25,200, is the approximate cost we are projecting for three, for basically nine months of the next fiscal year to allow our system to communicate via Verizon system. This is something that is developing, has been developing for the past four weeks or so, and will continue to develop, I think, in the coming weeks as well. But at this point, I think we feel that responsibly to ensure the continuity of the discussion, so we need to have this project funded somewhere. And at this point, the project would effectively be the paying for the lines and the monthly subscription for communications.
And this is the one area where I'm a little scratching my head, saying, well, okay, they're going to take some copper lines out, they're going to force you to use the copper lines, because the copper line is how a T1 line works. You know, I have a little bit of knowledge on the area. And it seemed to me that I could get a Comcast broadband or a Verizon FiOS connection. What I don't know is what additional hardware would have to be added to, you know, make that all work. But it seems to me that that's a better solution than creating a microwave, but I may be wrong. You know, it depends on, you know, if you pay for the microwave, then, you know, once you get it in place, the cost of the microwave is the electric power that you use. But I'm just concerned that there may be some other options that no one's looking at.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, I think we all share that concern. This is a bit of uncharted territory for us, and I give all the credit in the world to the fire chief and to firefighter Carter, who have been paying close attention to this over the past couple of years. I think there's more discussion to be had. I don't want to represent that this is the solution, but this is something that I think from a planning standpoint, to ensure continuity, we need to be prepared.
Figuring the dyke, stopgap measure to allow us to communicate. I'm just concerned and upset that Verizon gave us such short notice. And I don't know if we've, I know you articulated it probably verbally, but I think we should, in writing, express our overall consternation with the lack of notice, and I just think we should go on record.
Well, I do, too, and I agree with you, Michael.
No, no, no rush. Not going anywhere.
From my perspective, you know, the people that have a T1 line, which is the most expensive things that people used in the past, and they've been weaned off because you can get a broadband connection, right, which is a lot less money. But what a T1 line is, is a bunch of copper wires that go in and handle multiple channels. In other words, 64 telephone lines is essentially a T1 line. And, you know, is this some kind of a move on their part just to extract more money from us? You know?
Well, they're costing us more money in the, we had to move up our timeline, because we had assurances from them that it was further down the road, and from a capital planning standpoint, we were talking about phasing it in over a longer period of time, and that would be a force to spend a lot of money.
My guess is you could have a broadband, you could have a broadband connection and pay 30, 40 dollars a month for it, you know, versus several hundred for a T1 line. I just don't know. I'm sorry, Michael, but go ahead.
No problem. I don't believe a utility can cause a public safety issue. I can't imagine Copman and Page would ever allow us to fall in this situation. So we should check with legal counsel, and then our legal counsel needs to send a strong letter letting them know that just because they moved their timeline up cannot affect us in a public safety manner. And we should request a stay of this until we get our plan straightened out.
And we have another expensive issue coming our way, because Comcast is saying at the end of the contract, right, you can't use the fiber lines for communication between the buildings.
Right.
Which means we got to come up with another solution.
We are running into a public safety issue.
More money for that. I think it's time we go fight with them.
I don't think we have a choice. We have, I think we need legal counsel.
There is a Comcast representative in Boston that's supposed to be looking at basically the government side of things. I think we ought to have a meeting, have an outlook.
Yeah, no, I think we should contact a legislative delegation. Special legislation is needed, and the State Department of Public Utilities needs to put a halt to it in order to allow for adequate notification for communities to address the situation on a timely basis, you know.
What's that contract say?
But the notice that we've been given is not, does not allow us to do it on a timely...
I believe there's a notice requirement in our contract, right?
This, this particular service would be separate from our cable franchise license. This is effectively a telephone line, basically, per location. Does not make the notification any less unacceptable. I mean, certainly to have it displayed on the way that it has is, candidly, it's surprising to me that it hasn't gotten more public attention.
It's going to be, I mean, to me, this should be a PR nightmare for a utility like this.
Have you heard from other communities, that they'd be impacted the same way?
Candidly, I have not, and I'm surprised.
Transcript here, because we need a headline here.
I'll put, I will put a field order to the town administrators, town managers in the area, and I can tell you, I did speak with Representative Jones as well, who was certainly concerned to hear this and committed to assist, and I told him I would provide him the paper trail that kind of explains how this all unfolded and our disappointment, and I'm sure that he'll be helpful in facilitating a discussion.
It's not, not good.
So the long and short of, that's certainly a late explanation, but it relates to the operating budget, because I think we need to be planning for potential expense.
Yes, Michael.
And I assume you're done?
I just...
Just one thing I'm missing that came up in the conversation when we had the DPW presentation here on that particular Saturday, and we talked about the acting foreman or supervisor position. Have you guys come to resolution? And if you have, shouldn't there be an adjustment here?
Are you speaking to the position?
Yeah, we've been, we've had an acting supervisor, right? Supervisor or is it foreman?
A general foreman, I believe you're speaking.
Yeah.
The short answer is no, we've not concluded it. I'm not sure that there's going to be a need for an adjustment out of the operating budget. It's probably something that would be more than likely handled out of the salary pool. So I don't, I don't see it as having a direct impact here, but the short answer is no, it has not been resolved at this point in time.
It needs to get resolved. Just speaking on my, I'm not going to speak for the board, but it's gone on long enough. If it's got to be adjusted, then it needs to come back to us, or at least these numbers get adjusted. That needs to get worked out. It's been a long time. I hate to put the pressure on you, but it just doesn't make sense why we still haven't seen that rectified. I know you got a lot going on, but that's an acting position, shouldn't be acting that long.
I think perhaps a discussion from a collective bargaining strategy standpoint might be in order with regard to that particular issue.
Okay. That's fine. If it's got to be adjusted, though, this is the time.
I was saying that the salary is covered.
In the salary pool.
In the salary pool.
Okay. I don't, I can't imagine that's true, but, okay.
Well, that's what you said.
I mean, all right. I disagree with the town administrator. It's okay for us to have a disagreement, I assume.
I'm not sure that we disagree with regard to this.
It just may not be as apparent as you want to see it yet.
Okay.
Right?
I guess I'm in the dark on it.
You all set?
Apparently, I am.
I think your question was a financial question at first. If I said it correctly, and I believe, and I'm looking at the financial...
It's a management and a financial question.
So I'll take the financial aspect of it, and the finance director may not, may not hear me, but there is a position, the general foreman position, identified in the budget with the salary at the appropriate grade.
That is accurate.
The position is funded. The management end of it, again, is a standpoint where we have somebody who's certainly performing the position, and I think performing it very highly, but I do think that there's some collective bargaining strategy for us to have as a whole, a discussion to have.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Anyone else?
And now, Ms. Lafferty, would you, anything to add to that?
I would have to start.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Liz.
So...
Do you want to go back to these articles, or?
Supposed to.
What?
Is that the end of it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just some more.
No, I mean, that concludes the presentation. I mean, it would be our intention to have the finance director, and you see the assistant finance director, join us this evening, Laurie, and thank you for being here this evening. Liz will not be joining us at what I believe will be the next meeting, which will be Monday, May 8. So we were, you know, as we've done in the past, looking to make sure that we felt that there was a consensus for support amongst the board, so that we can generate a budget document and have that ready to be voted on at the May 8 meeting, with a recommendation going in the warrant and ultimately printed in the warrant. So we think we've captured, I mean, we would love to have captured everything that's on there. I tried to prioritize based on the comments I heard and what I believe our operational needs are, and that's what resulted in the highlighted items being recommended for funding.
Michael, I saw in the packet a public hearing scheduled for a meeting on the 4th, which is a reorganization.
Oh, a Board of Appeals hearing, you're saying?
Oh, is that a Board of Appeals hearing? I'm sorry, I was thinking it was a Board of...
No, there shouldn't be a selectment hearing scheduled that evening. That's generally a preserved agenda with only reorganization considered. There may be some ancillary related actions on the organization, but nothing beyond that.
It was Board of Appeals, I'm sorry.
To your point, though, we may not be able to use this room that evening. To your point, we may not be able to use this room that evening.
That's okay. We can find a small office for that.
Good room, bud. That's fabulous.
Okay. Shall we continue going through the articles? Is everybody up for that?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Would you move on, article?
We should be on Article 8. We did 26, we jumped to 26.
Right.
We had done 7, so I think we're up to 8.
We're on 8.
Routine selection of town officers, the board generally recommends.
Yeah.
Kate?
I'm sorry, we stopped at Article 3.
That's ours, God.
We don't have motion on it.
We should be on 4 right now.
No, we didn't even, we did nothing on that.
I'm looking at the ones that are in the motion.
Oh, sorry.
There's some others that are not, right?
Sorry.
Where is Article 3?
Forgive me.
And...
My mistake.
Stabilization fund.
Forgive me.
And at this point, are we putting money into the stabilization fund, Michael?
Yes.
Or is that just in there in case we...
Yes, there would be a transfer in, and the transfer in directly ties back to the revenue and expense plan that we just presented here this evening.
Into the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund.
Oh, capital improvement, I'm sorry, I'm looking, yes.
So we are putting, at this time, there might be additional funds put in there due to the article being taken off of the warrant. So, but at this time, we are putting 851,637 from free cash, which was on the presentation, which I will put into Dropbox, so that you all have that. And it's 200,000 from the debt service FY17 operating budget.
I did that, I...
For a total of 1,516,37.
Okay, that's 20, okay. We did that.
So that's the amount at this time, but you can still recommend the article. I'm just letting you know that's subject to change.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 3, recommend that town meeting Article 3 fiscally in 2017 appropriate funds to capital improvement stabilization fund.
Recommended town meeting, or recommend?
Recommend.
Recommend.
There may be an addition to it, because I have a big deal.
I need to drink my coffee. Recommend.
On the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Article 8, selection of town offices, do I hear a recommendation?
Um...
I hope it's recommend.
Mr. Chairman.
Are we going to do Article 4? Are we going to do Article 4?
No, I'm only going through the articles that are, they're a motions.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 8, select town officers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Article 9, here, enact the reports of the town offices and committees.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 9, here, enact on reports of town officers and committees.
Recommend, second.
Second by Mr. Yule. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Article 10, authorize director of public works to accept easements.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 10, authorize director of public work to accept easements.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. I guess it's unanimous. Article 11, authorize treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements. On the motion.
Is that a recommend?
Mrs. Manapelli, you reading the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend, recommend Article 11, authorize treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Unanimous. Article 12, authorize Chapter 90 highway construction.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 12, authorize Chapter 90 highway construction.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule.
I got a question. Question.
No question.
Can we, can we get an update on last year's Chapter 90, what we approved, and what, you know, just an update on what was done and what's remaining before June town meeting?
Yes, it may be appropriate to offer that update during the review of the capital improvement plan, since there'll be a request for town road fundings and all that as far as that plan. So yes...
When's that projected?
This is the state portion of it, Michael.
May.
Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous.
Just for the record, the amount for that is 508,338.27, and the Department of Public Courts has submitted a $300,000 town road appropriation request, which is pending before the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Article 14, fund construction of the pump station.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 14, fund construction of the pump station.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. Do we have a dollar on that?
We do, we do, Mr. Chairman. I'll be with you in one moment. Believe it's 2.55 million identified in there, and this is the first of three articles that relate to the MWRA project, which will speak to a broader, broader update as the next agenda item. But one thing I would note is that the town's consulting engineer continues to work to update those numbers, so right now, we're carrying a number of two point five five million dollars for, for that portion of it, but that may be updated as we get closer to town meeting. Similarly, is the case for Redding Water System and North Redding Water System appropriations. One thing the board may want to consider, too, is whether to consider these as a single article. Now, I put them on the draft warrant as multiple articles, but they certainly could be, could be handled differently than that, where they all relate to the same project.
Well, do we want to wait and recommend, leave the recommendation for a town meeting, and we can change that at future meeting if required?
We can present the most updated information at the May eighth meeting, and the board can decide that.
So, why don't we just pass over this one for now? Article fifteen, same thing?
We get a motion on the floor that was seconded.
What, I'm sorry?
Motion was seconded.
I'll, I'll.
To recommend it.
I was gonna say, we, we already proved, well, that's.
I have no problem recommending it. Obviously, we're gonna recommend it. I was just saying, if we wait until we get all the information together, we won't be going back and re-recommending it.
So, I'll take back my second.
It's up to you, though, whatever you want to do.
Is there a desire to consolidate the article into three or one?
I don't know. I, you know, I would like.
Why not?
What, you mean the all or nothing approach?
Boy, you can't have one without the other.
If one passes, the other one's gonna pass.
I know the number looks bigger going up there, but people are gonna do the mental math. It just seems to, put them all together makes sense.
Is there any, is there any impact from an appropriation standpoint, if we do separate articles, is that better or worse? Or does it make a difference?
I don't have a problem on my end.
No, I know, I'm just asking separate line items as far as what's appropriated and then what's left over and what we can do with it.
They would have to be similar to the FY eighteen capital expenditure article. They need to all be listed. They can be part of one article, but they need to be listed separately with, whether it's an authorization to borrow, you know, the funding source, water, infrastructure stabilization, so there has to be three different amounts with authorizations.
Why don't we leave them where they are? And why don't we take all Article fourteen, fifteen, and sixty, and leave them as they are, and cover them at our next meeting?
Okay.
Where we can put the numbers together. There may be some more information about funding at that time, too.
So, chef, would you send it?
I would draw my.
So, would you draw the motion?
I would draw.
Yeah, yes, that would be.
I would draw the motion. My second.
Can we just make a determination if we're, the majority would like to see them combined into one or not, so we could at least give some direction? Can't we at least make, can we at least make a determination whether we want to combine them into one or not?
I, I think it'd be better based on the fact that different funding sources.
So, that decision's.
Leave it separate.
Same, same funding sources?
Same funding source.
They have same funding?
Yes, so we can, we just need to have one, we can have one warrant article.
Right.
But they have to be listed, you know, in a row with the funding source next to it, which is authorization to borrow, but they have to be three different authorizations to borrow. We can't just put them all together and bond council won't approve that as one project.
Yeah.
If that makes sense, Michael, if you want to put them together, then do it.
Yeah, we did that last year.
So, I, we, yeah, exactly, just gonna be my point. So, we did this similarly last year. You remember, we had the FEIR and the design work, as well as the construction of the pump station acquisition. That was all one article itemized by, I only put them on the draft warrant as three separate articles, in the event that the board desired, wanted to consider them separately. But I don't think there's any issue with considering them together.
Everyone in sport putting it together?
Yes, I am.
Sure.
Okay, all right, that takes care of that.
Thank you.
We skip, Mr. Chairman, through you to Article twenty-one.
Yes, so Article twenty-one, appropriate, uh, ban premiums to reduce middle high school project borrowing costs.
To the finance director.
The ban interest premium that we received last June for the five million that we banned for the high school, middle school project was thirty thousand, eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. So, we need to appropriate that ban premium to the high school, middle school project, which would reduce our long-term borrowing.
It has no impact on the budget. Does it have any impact on the tax rate?
Yes, yes and no.
Ever so slightly.
Yes.
Couple grains of sand.
While we're on the subject, and I, we don't need all the detail, but there are a couple of things going on. Obviously, the school project is winding down, and eventually, the school building authority owes us money, right? And from, and I don't know what the timeframe is for that, and I don't know if we have all that information locked down. But in the interim, we're doing bans for, hopefully, for what we're gonna get back from them, right? And it's costing us interest, right? So.
Part of, we, the five million dollar ban that we have out there right now for the high school, middle school project, part of that will become long-term debt.
Yes, I understand that.
And not all of it will be, so.
Okay. So, we continue bans until we screw away with the state and then.
Correct.
Finish the project.
Yes, so that, that is what this thirty thousand dollars is.
So, in this case, I guess we're recommending this article. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article twenty-one, appropriation of ban premiums, reduce middle and high school project borrowing costs.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article twenty-two, fund retirement obligations.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article twenty-two, fund retirement obligations.
Do we have a number for that?
Yes, the amount for the retirement obligations is two hundred and seven thousand, one seventy-nine, and the funding source is raised and appropriate.
Do we have a motion?
This is both town and school.
Do you know how it's broken out?
Yes.
Mrs. Manapelli?
I just have a question, I'm sorry, no.
I'm not, I'm not hearing you, Michael.
I apologize, I'll, you'll talk, I had asked what the breakout was, split between school and town.
One moment, it's.
No, right.
Loading.
Did you get your answer?
Not yet.
The school's portion is one thirty-three, one seventy-nine.
Thank you.
You, you do know, Michael, that the, the school pays these out, or I guess the teachers, they get paid over a three-year period? That may not be true of all employees, but.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
I made, I made a, read the motion, sorry.
I made a motion, but it was not seconded. I vote to recommend.
Second by Mr. Yule. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Article twenty-four, appropriate funds to other post-employment benefits trusted, trust fund. What are we doing here?
The finance director.
The amount is three hundred thousand, and the funding source is raised and appropriate. And I just want to make note, I, I was incorrect with the amount of one thirty-three for the school's retirement. Their amount is actually seventy-four thousand dollars this year, and the town's amount is one thirty-three.
Okay. Okay, getting back to Article twenty-four, three hundred thousand dollars, what's the source?
Raised and appropriate.
Raised and appropriate.
This is an increase over FY seventeen. We put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into OPEB in FY seventeen from raised and appropriate. We've increased it to three hundred thousand.
And this number is based on the adjustments that we got, based on the insurance company and, and no employees have been hired, right?
Yes.
And is it fully funding, though? It's not fully funding it. How far, how short are we from the actuarial study in the appropriation?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars, not a million dollars. It's a substantial number. This is in line with the, the board's previously proposed strategy of trying to cover the cost for new employees. Don't it?
Right, no, is, so.
That's what he was asking.
That's what I'm asking, we're, yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about the eighty million dollar liability. I'm talking about, no, the new employees that were hired. That was the goal, to fund fully the staff, the new staff.
And we are short how much?
No, this will, this is the plan to fund the new employees' health.
Moving forward.
Yes.
So, three hundred covers it.
Yes, that piece. It doesn't cover the.
We know.
No, it doesn't do anything for before, no, you get, no, 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 we're all trying to, you know.
They're gonna forfeit that.
Just stop the bleeding here at this point, and that was the strategy. But I, I thought, I thought it was, we were a little bit short when we were talking.
I think that the shortness was referred to the first year of the funding of this, where we cut it in half because of an excessive snow and ice deficit.
Right, but I mean, as far as, but I thought with the actuarial study, I thought it was three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, not three hundred, or it was twenty-eight thousand dollars.
We had been carrying two fifty, we had to increase it to three hundred based on the actuary study.
Correct.
This number reflects that.
In FY sixteen, we appropriated a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Right.
Which we cut in half from two fifty. So, then FY seventeen, we did two fifty. And then, when we had the presentation of the actuarial study back in last June, we had to increase that figure from two fifty, which we had been carrying in the revenue plan for FY eighteen, to three hundred thousand.
Good.
Yes, Michael.
You can't use free cash for this at all?
You can.
Combination? I mean, we have the seventy-five thousand dollars we're not gonna use, so.
We might need that for October, though.
I, I would keep it in the, in some way, so that it's available.
All right, can we all agree then, we're gonna hold it? It's not gonna get spent on something else? We put it in the minutes? We all agree on that?
I would say, through you, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I think that we would, we can agree, but I would suggest that we agree on May eighth, rather than agree this evening, because there's still a couple more weeks to go.
I just don't want to see it get disappeared. No, I want it to go here.
My intent and my support of moving into October wasn't to use, reuse that money for something else, was some craziness.
Make sure it's in the minutes.
What?
Just making a joke, Bob, sorry.
All right.
I think Rita has a question.
What?
I think Rita has a question.
What is her question?
Yeah, Rita.
I thought she was giving us a finger, I'm sorry.
Can I speak to that for a minute?
Yeah, sure. Well, you have to, I'm sorry, but.
No, I want to make sure, I'm supposed to come here. Rita Mullin, twenty-nine Abbott Road. What I'd like to ask tonight, part of the reason that our group was here, would it be possible at the June town meeting, a lot of the things that we talked about tonight, have a list at every, at the, every town meeting, and I would love to see the selectmen address eight or nine of the items that could be coming up? And I think what Michael had said tonight, and the TA, I know we talked about whether the town hall, have these things on it so that everybody has heard about it, because being on a lot of committees, I get frustrated, as I'm sure you are, Michael, on EDC, this, and this, and this, and all the committees, that when you come up before people, and you'll have selectmen sometimes, finance, school committee people look at you, go, I never heard of that. I didn't know what you're doing that. And I think you kids all know, at some point, you've talked about all those things, let's say, that Rich spoke of tonight. I would love to see it at a town meeting, because the transcript does a great job of putting it in the paper. Selectmen list six things that you're looking at that are future items. So, it never should be a shock that when we talk about a fire department, we talk about the town hall, we talk about the wastewater, because as you all know, there are about two hundred and fifty people in town that go to meetings. And I think this way, you talk about it, I, I would love to see it on there, so you go down and it's, I, I definitely agree with what you said tonight, Michael. I want to see these items on the October meeting, and you shouldn't keep passing them off. We've been talking about the town hall for an awful lot of years. They've been talking about the fire department for an awful lot of years, and then you kids put in order which ones are important, but you're right. You can't make a good decision unless you know how much it's gonna cost, and then you decide where it's gonna go. So, I would love every town meeting, that the selectmen continue to talk about those things, so that we can address them.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Mullin, after October town meeting, annually, we've been getting together and updating our strategic plan, and, you know, June town meeting may be an opportunity for us just to present that one page of our objectives, maybe even our progress assessment as well, just maybe those two pages that may answer a lot of this, what you're suggesting.
Well, I think if you do, I think it'd be great, because then people can't.
Really, we don't do it any other time.
People can't hide behind other, you know, I, I've been there when we did the, the field, and I happened to sit beside somebody at a football game that said, this isn't right, so-and-so is not able to play on this field, and it's like, oh, my God, where does everybody get all this information? But this way, you kids come up, you tell us what's going on, beautiful, the paper puts it in the paper, and continue to update the things that you do. And I think it would be much easier then when you're ready to ask for however much money it is. And I agree with you, if you're gonna ask for some money, you don't know what the town hall's gonna cost. Doesn't matter where it is, but you should put everything in there, and then as you're looking at that, you're saying, wait a minute, there might be three other groups that had some input for it, then you're discussing all those, because you can't have everybody in the same room. But I would love to see it, if, if it's twice a year, that you talk about it under committee reports, it's a selectmen's committee report, that you're talking about things that we're still looking at and expect us to start talking to about it again. Thank you, 'cause I appreciate you kids do a lot of work, and you're all in the same meetings, so you, you're all sure maybe of what we're talking about, but sometimes the people in the town hall, uh, town aren't, so, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, where are we now? Article, I have a last one. Retirement obligation, we've done that, appropriate funds to other.
We still have a motion on OPEB, right?
We didn't make it yet, but yes, I move to recommend Article twenty-four.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Article twenty-seven, on the master plan.
Mr. Chairman, through you, this is an article submitted by Community Planning Commission. That list correct my numbers if I'm wrong, but I believe it's eighty-five thousand dollars. They have a pending grant application right now that could possibly defray that cost, and we await word, but right now, we're carrying the full cost. I believe the application was for twenty-five thousand dollars, if I remember correctly.
And that money is coming from what?
Free cash, if I understand correctly.
On the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article twenty-seven, on the master plan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. We still have a few more.
Mr. Chairman, through you, just to defer the finance director for the upcoming articles related to revolving funds.
All the revolving funds, why don't we do them all at once, right?
Right, twenty-eight to thirty-nine.
Article twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two.
Forty, twenty-eight to forty.
Twenty-eight to thirty-two, is that right?
Thirty-six.
I have forty.
Forty is authorized naming of distance learning lab?
Yeah. Oh, I, that goes on.
Oh, all at once?
We, we're supposed to do a meeting.
We have one, you're the sixth item on our agenda.
We're gonna put them all, one article, we can't, though.
Gotta work in the morning.
We can recommend Articles twenty-eight through whatever.
No, no, no.
Yeah, that's all we're doing, yeah, we're just recommending them.
Article twenty-eight through Article thirty-six typically, even at town meeting, are recommended as one. In one motion, I shall say.
Okay. This is to recommend those articles, the revolving funds.
Conservation dam and rain barrel, recycling. Robert Nabel, if he has emergency management, youth services, library activity room, board of health. And those are Articles twenty.
Through thirty-six.
Twenty, through thirty-six.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Article thirty-nine is zoning. I think we will hold on that one until we, you know, get some input from the, we're either gonna get it from the CPC before the town meeting, or we'll make a decision at town meeting. So, we'll take that up at our next meeting to determine what we want to do. Article forty, authorized naming of the distance learning lab, that's gonna come from the school committee.
Recommendation at town meeting.
Yep. For both of them? Oh, we have something on the zoning bylaw.
Okay, who knows?
Yeah, I don't know.
Why don't we just set it for a recommendation at town meeting, we can always change it.
Yep.
Article thirty-nine, obtain a motion, Mrs. Manapelli. Article thirty-nine.
Did you say we're?
Make a, we should recommend. Do you want to put it on hold, or you just, my guess is we're not gonna have, they're not gonna have a public hearing, we're not gonna have, you know, probably town meeting.
Yeah, so, recommendation at town meeting.
Yeah, okay, you're saying to recommend a town meeting, okay. The motion should be to make recommendation at town meeting. We're confused.
I move, well, I thought you said hold, so, Mr. Chairman, I vote to recommend at town meeting, Article thirty-nine.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. And the last article that's on our list for tonight is Article forty, authorized naming of the distance learning lab. I guess we'll make a recommendation at town meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting, Article forty.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And that concludes those motions. I think the balance of them are gonna be on our next agenda.
May, that's correct. Mr. Chairman, just a notation with regard to Article forty. Those of you may observe that that was not previously on the list. May, that's correct. Mr. Chairman, just a notation with regard to Article forty, those of you may observe that that was not previously on the list of articles, it was something that was provided to me by the superintendent of schools, it was approved by the school committee in advance of the deadline, but not submitted to us, in advance of the deadline of March twentieth, if I recall. So, if it looks new, it's new for just that reason, the board would need to obviously accept placing it on the warrant, in my understanding, it was just not submitted to us as a ministerial error by the school office.
Okay. Mrs. Yule.
Yeah, I just make sure, I know what you said, but I want to make sure I understand, so they approved it prior to, to required date?
That's my understanding.
But they did not submit it, all right, and they're obviously adding it now. Do we have, just for the point of making sure we're doing it right, do we have a copy of the minutes that reflect that?
I do not have them, I'm certainly secure them. If the board would like, I can attempt to secure them before the signing of the warrant on May eighth.
Just the financial planning also, it's blocking.
And they also mentioned it at their pre- meeting.
So it seems, okay, okay.
They know what it would have been named for, but they haven't made it public.
Right, okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the inclusion of Article forty in the annual June town meeting warrant.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That article was not submitted.
No, what was the motion?
That moved to authorize the inclusion of Article forty in the annual June town meeting warrant.
Thank you.
Aye.
This motion being requested by the school.
Okay, I didn't hear it down there, I followed it.
I'm not using the mic, sorry.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, next item on our agenda is to review the status of the MWRA water project, yes?
Can I make a suggestion, I think Barbara Statts is here, do you think that we can address, uh, anything, is that she's here?
Oh, I'd be happy to do that.
I'd be happy if we did that, too.
Sorry, Barbara. I know you love us, but.
Sorry for Mark, and sorry for Andrew, too, but.
Uh, that would be.
Number thirteen, oh, excuse me, no, it's number eleven.
Yes. Yep.
Oh, make a motion.
Yeah, if you want to.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend the following individual for reappointment to the Board of Registars for a term to expire April first, two thousand and twenty, Joyce Jenny, one oh three, Elm Street.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule.
So this is just a regular reappointment for Joyce Jenny, as I'm sure you're all aware, the Board of Registars is comprised of four individuals representing the two major political parties, so we have two Democrats and two Republicans, and we always have to maintain that balance on the board. Joyce is the Republican member whose term expires this April, this month, and so the Republican Town Committee did need to put forward a name for recommendation, which was Joyce's again, and she is being recommended by the Republican Town Committee to renew her term for three years, which goes until two thousand and twenty.
I would certainly recommend.
Yeah.
As a liaison, I would certainly recommend the appointment, or reappointment.
Right.
We appreciate her serving.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Yeah, she, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Joyce has been dedicated in what she has done, and what she does for the, for the, for the voters, and making sure that all of what Barbara Statts wants to have done, that needs to have done, is done.
We work collectively and collaboratively, but she is.
Now I have to apologize to Barbara for keeping you here, if something was only gonna take a couple of minutes.
But, um.
On the motion, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I seconded.
And you seconded.
I seconded that, but I think Barbara wanted to say.
I just wanted to thank Joyce, too, as you said, you know, she has been a dedicated member of the board, she's always attending the meetings, and participates willingly, and so I appreciate her service personally for, for being so dedicated to the board.
Thank you, Barbara.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We also have Martin's Pond?
No.
No, we have one more unexpired term.
There's one vacancy and two.
Yes.
Two individuals.
Oh, I'm sorry, you should go back to the.
So I'll, I'll put forward a little brief explanation for this one, this is to appoint a Democratic member to complete an unexpired term of a previous board member. Leona Gallo has served with us for two years as a Democratic member of the Board of Registars, together with Kylie Gamelin, who's the other Democratic member. Leona's term would go until next year, but for personal reasons, she has resigned from the Board of Registars, so right now, we have that vacancy to fill an unexpired term, just until the end of her term, complete term, which would be in April of two thousand and eighteen, at which time, then, we'll come forward with another.
Full term.
Motion to, to fill that term for three years. So this is just for one year, to complete an unexpired term, and I believe that we have two people that the Democratic Town Committee have recommended for appointment.
But only one vacancy.
One vacancy, correct. And I believe Mr. O'Leary is the liaison to the Board of Registars, and may have been in touch with the two individuals.
Yeah, I'll wait for the motion.
Move to nominate both, and then you.
Yeah, right, and then the board will just vote.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to place in nomination the following names for appointment as member of the Board of Registars to fill an unexpired term through April first, two thousand and eighteen, there's one vacancy, the two are Gloria Mastrow, nine traveled away, and Carol McGillicuddy, sixteen Marblehead Street.
Mr. O'Leary.
I'll second, I'll second the motion. Again, I know both individuals very well, and I will be recommending Gloria Mastrow, as most of you know Gloria, she has been serving in various capacities and volunteer positions on different boards and committees over the years, and she would like to fill this unexpired term, and I think she'll serve, serve us well, and the Democratic Town Committee has recommended either one of these two individuals. I thank Carol for stepping forward, and again, there'll be next year maybe consideration for a full term, but this particular time, I'd recommend Gloria Mastrow.
We'll start with you then, although, roll call vote, Mr. O'Leary.
Gloria Mastrow.
Mr. Yule.
Gloria Mastrow.
Mrs. Manapelli.
Gloria Mastrow.
Mr. Prisco.
Gloria Mastrow.
And the chair votes Gloria Mastrow.
That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to the, the agenda here.
Back to eights?
Go back to MWRA water project.
Back to eights? Oh, hold on, don't we have?
A Martin's Pond?
The Martin's Pond, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend the following individual for reappointment to the Martin's Pond Reclamation Study Committee for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, Lawrence Soucy, for Alston Road.
Second. Second by Mr. Yule. Who's making the recommendation on the individual?
It's only, it's a reappointment.
It's a reappointment.
Yeah, okay. I just want to hold the, I don't remember.
Mike?
I recommend, yes.
For the discussion, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, let's go back, see if we can move ahead here, review status of MWRA water project. Ms. Gilvato, you put it on there for a reason, I gather?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman, and here this evening are DPW Director Andrew Lafferty and Water Superintendent Mark Clark, thank you for staying with us this evening, gentlemen. Really, intention was to update the board with regard to the efforts related to the MWRA project, and then to speak to a couple of meetings that were held recently with the town of Andover as well. So first, with regard to the MWRA project, we have obviously the warrant articles pending for funding the construction of the pump station, and the improvements to the water mains in the town of Reading, in the town of North Reading. And our consulting engineer, Wright Pierce, has been in communication with the town of Reading, as I understand it, with regard to the design of improvements there, which I believe are at seventy-five percent at this point, so we are certainly progressing along with regard to that. Similarly, you know, one of the biggest concerns, as the board knows, was identifying a location relative to the pump station, and we do have that location secured, and so there's been some discussion underway with regard to, to that site. Probably the most significant thing that's ongoing right now is our, the permitting activities that Wright Pierce is undertaking to respond and submit the final environmental impact report relative to the transition to the MWRA, and that's something that will be submitted to the, to the Water Resource Commission, as well as the DEP, I have the right agencies, Andrew. We're projecting later on in the spring, so that'll be submitted, it'll be a comment period that will take place, and then they'll respond back to us, and depending upon that, it will dictate the potential awarding of the appropriate permitting. So right now, the plan at this point is, again, as the board knows, continuing forward with regard to those design and permitting activities to request the funding at town meeting. As we draw closer to town meeting, there may be some changes with regard to the dollar amounts, as more information's available, particularly regarding the design, but right now, based on the best information available, the estimates that we've been carrying in the capital improvement plan are the numbers that we've been working with. Right now, the projected construction timeline, depending upon the results of the permitting, would be for the later part of the calendar year, with construction taking place beginning the very end of the construction season, and continuing through calendar year two thousand and eighteen, and into early two thousand and nineteen. The second piece, which we wanted to update the board to, was that selectmen, Prisco, Misery, and I, and Andrew and Mark, and Wright Pierce, met with the town of Andover roughly four weeks ago, I believe it was, and then again with them roughly ten days or so ago, the second time, I said, Prisco, I know you weren't able to be there, but Mr. Misery was able to join us. And, you know, we've effectively are following up on their previous indications that they're able to provide our water under terms that are advantageous to the town, and so we have expressed to them on multiple occasions at both of those meetings, that, you know, our concerns are certainly, their ability to provide us our long-term reliable water source, first and foremost, secondly, the cost of water, the cost that the town could expect to pay per a hundred cubic foot, or a million gallons, whatever the rate may be, for water. And also establishing some sort of an arrangement that's permanent, the option we're looking at right now, MWRA, would effectively be a permanent solution for the town's water supplies with a large volume available to it. So at the most recent meeting, and Mr. Misery or Andrew remarks certainly covert me if I'm wrong in conveying it, but at the most recent meeting, there was some discussion with regard to the water, availability of water, and representations made to us were that the capacity of the Merrimack River was sufficient to provide all of the town of North Reading's water needs. So from a standpoint of capacity, they were very confident that they had that access to that water supply, the ability to store the supply at their filtration plant, the pond outside their filtration plant, and the ability to generate that supply. There would need to be some capital improvements that would need to be made to their, their system to convey the water from their distribution, from their filtration plant to the North Reading line at the two existing locations, and that capital improvement obviously would be work that would need to be done to accommodate the greater capacity that North Reading, under the scenario they proposed, would be drawing. The issue of permanency is a bit more challenging, there were, there are restrictions out there with regard to intermunicipal agreement, and as the board has discussed on many occasions, we're looking for a long-term water source, and not necessarily something that's going to be a twenty-year IMA, subject to renegotiations, renegotiation, and while I think that there's some hesitation, they did express that they'd be willing to look creatively at a long-term solution that we believe would likely require legislative action and legislative endorsement. Never mind any of the associated environmental permitting that you'd be looking at with regard to drawing from the Merrimack River basin, and drawing additional water from the Merrimack River basin into the, to the town, which is in the Upset River basin. And so they also proposed a rate, which was effectively ninety-five percent of their tier-one rate, which is their lowest rate, and I think we figured that out to be about two dollars and ninety-five cents, if I remember correctly, based on their current rate, and over a term that would effectively be a ninety-nine-year term. That was the concept that was discussed broadly. Certainly, a number of details with regard to that, that we expressed, you know, were open questions for us, that, while it certainly stepped in the right direction, the issue of permanency, and, and, you know, who's gonna account for the long-term costs associated at their filtration plant, should improvements be needed, the breakdown of any other costs associated with this, a lot of open questions. So really, the reason it's on the agenda is to provide this update, so that the board has all of the, the current information, but we're not necessarily looking for any decision. We've told Andover, we're gonna continue down the path of the MWRA, because that's the direction we believe is most appropriate for the town at this point, you know, and while we certainly are appreciative of their efforts, there's more evaluation to be done with regard to what they're proposing. We do have a meeting scheduled with them next Thursday afternoon to hear more about what they have to say. Mr. Chairman, through you, if I could stop for a moment, and you look to Andrew and Mark, if there's anything that you think I've missed, or would need to add, you know, certainly feel free to weigh in.
I think they, well, kind of, they have to say, with the, the one other issue is the inter-basin transfer, and upgrading that, and what one might run into, if the state is so much in support of moving us forward with the MWRA. We're getting an inter-basin transfer for them, too, but we have to expand the inter-basin transfer, that exists is only one point five five million gallons, I think, somewhere in that range, that would have to be increased if you continue to go down the path of Andover supplying all the water.
And, Miss Misery, I think you bring up a great point, and Mark, I know you submitted some information to us this morning with regard to that, if you want to, you know, certainly grieve the board, feel free to, or Andrew, I'm sorry, through you, Andrew.
So I dug out through my files this morning and came up with a, it was an email that actually the town of Andover had sent to the Water Resources Commission, asking what would be required for us to increase our inter-basin transfer permit, it's effectively one point five million gallons a day right now. I don't have the document with me, but basically it said, if we were to increase it by less than an additional one million gallons a day, so we could basically go up to just under two point five million gallons a day, they consider that what they term an insignificant increase in, in a, in an inter-basin transfer permit. Much less review goes into that, they said they could likely come up within a ninety-day period to agree to, to increase that. If we were to go above that one million gallons a day, it would require an EIR-type filing with them, which is, you know, it's a six, six-month review, then they have a sixty-day comment period, it's a much longer and more involved process.
Which we are in the midst of right now for the MWRA project.
And again, the additional capacity that we would be looking for from Andover would exceed the million, million gallons?
No.
At the end of the build-out, it would slightly exceed what that.
Right. And again, through you, Mr. Chairman, you know, my recollection is, is that Andover has, also has limitations on their capacity to draw from the Upset River, actually, from the Merrimack River.
That's claimed not.
And my, my understanding was, and I don't know where, where else I would get this information, other than listening over the last few, few years, is that for what our needs are, and what the MWRA is offering to us, which we'll be looking for a similar amount from Andover, that would put them very close to their capacity, and their ability to draw from the Merrimack River, thereby limiting their ability to grow their own system internally. Did that come up at all, or?
That, what they told us they could draw from the river was a number that was firing excessive.
Yeah, unlimited.
Third in a month. That's what I thought I heard.
My understanding of it is, their comment was the, the capacity of the Merrimack River is, in their terms, basically limitless, in terms of, they look at the, the seven-year, ten-day low-flow period, and that's, that's a lot of water, so they, they wouldn't have to draw from the river during that period, they can pump into their pond, they can draw off their. They can pump into their pond, they can draw off their pond for an extended period if there's a short-term drought. What I believe you're referring to, Steve, is they, they have a Water Management Act permit, just like we did. Currently, their average daily demand is about point eight, or eight hundred thousand gallons a day, point eight MGD below, their average day is point eight MGD below what their Water Management Act permit is. We would be taking up a significant amount of that. So what's the difference between the inter-basin transfer and a Water Management Act permit? Inter-basin transfer is, this is the max you can transfer on any given day. So our, basically, if we're looking to draw two and a half million gallons on our peak day demand in the summer, that's it. Water Management Act is more an average over the, the, so we, you can easily go up a million gallons a day in your peak day, but your average day only goes up maybe a tenth of an MGD, you know, because it's spread over the whole period. So we've made that argument a couple times with, is the water, is the inter-basin transfer act permit a daily max, or is it just an annual spread out? And, you know, the read we've got on it is, that one is the daily max, which is why we would have to go back before the Water Resources Commission to address that issue.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, we didn't necessarily bring this up, we don't believe that there's any decision to be made at this point in time, it's more informational. We will meet with, planning to meet with Andover on May fourth, and again, I can't stress enough, because of the timelines associated with the work, continues with regard to the MWRA project.
And we told them, we had to keep moving ahead because we have a schedule. And we need to stay, keep to the schedule.
Again, that schedule was driven by, in part, by a previous agreement that we drew up with the town of Andover.
Right.
That's what put us on the timeline we're on.
Well, the letter from July two thousand and fourteen is what put us on this path. I think they're living to regret it now, and, but it's unfortunate it put us on this path. So I don't know why we're having another meeting.
I think it falls apart because they're going to have difficulty getting an approval for eighty-nine or ninety-nine year, ninety-nine year agreement, but I may be wrong.
But what's the point in having another meeting?
Well, we committed that we would brief the board and set a date to, to hear whatever other detail that they could put forth with regard to, you know, business terms, length. I think, I got the impression that there was some consultation that they may need to do on their end with regard to what was, what our concerns were. You know, again, we'll take direction accordingly from the board, obviously.
What you missed, Michael, was the meeting was at their pump station.
Mm-hmm.
They have a fairly elaborate setup there, a lot of computer monitoring of everything. You know, I, I don't know, did you get a tour of it, Mark, or?
I've seen it a couple times over the years. So it, it's, it's a modern state of the, it's, it's not brand-new, but it's a modern state-of-the-art type treatment plant. They're one of the first treatment plants to use ozone, which is, you know, it's a fairly powerful water treatment. So people think, well, they're taking Merrimack River water. Ozone is a state-of-the-art type treatment for river water, or, you know.
But ozone would take the iron out of the water that's coming out of our pump stations.
It would be a real expensive way to do it.
Yeah.
Kate has a comment.
Well, and I think we, we would want to, you know, keep the affiliation for the redundancy purposes, right? We, we talked about that before.
We have, yes. Through you, Mr. Chairman, certainly it's something that we believe would be advantageous for both communities, not necessarily required as part of our permitting, at least not for North Reading's purposes, but, you know, ideally, it would, it would be advantageous if, you know, it would be advantageous if we had that connection as a backup for us and for Reading potentially.
Mr. Chair, at the meeting, Mr. Chair, at the meeting we were at, they did inform us that if we did not, if we decided to go with MWRA, then the option for us to connect to them for emergency purposes will be off the table unless we pay them a tremendous amount of money for infrastructure upgrades that they're going to need to keep that pipe available to us.
Who made that representation?
You know, they're trying to pressure us into going down the path that they'd like us to be on, so.
Was that the Selectman?
Would have to be.
Making that representation?
You know, I, I think the, the one thing that...
Hold on, before, did I hear wrong?
I, I don't, I think the concept was that if there were going to be a backup, that they, it, it wouldn't be free. In other words, that there would be some sort of a subscription or other compensation we'd have to pay them.
Michael, I have it right here, quote, I quote it right here. "Andover will not back up North Reading without the same infrastructure improvements and annual maintenance." That's exactly their words, not ours.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking to disagree with regard to what you're noticing.
Well, then I think it's worthwhile to, to do the meeting because not only for redundancy purposes, but just neighborly mutual aid type of things that we, we also provide. So I think it's good to keep that rapport going and hopefully in a positive direction, you know?
If we want to soar Route twenty-eight to the Great Lawrence District through Andover, we have to maintain, you know, communication and work with them. I mean, there's no way around it.
No disagreement there.
But...
I had recommended to them that our time best spent right now would be on that.
I spent a lot of time, and some other members of the board did, spending over four years to get the five-year contract, dealing with a particular Selectman on the board. I won't tell you, I won't mention his name at this point. And, you know, they were just totally unreasonable. And the concern that I have going forward, I mean, you know, if we can get to the ninety-nine year agreement, maybe it doesn't matter too much because I won't be around. But, you know, if, if you're stuck with even a twenty-year agreement, then you're, now you're going against another board of Selectmen who may have different ideas. To me, that's enough to say, I'd rather spend a little more money if you get onto the MWRA in the long run, we're going to be better off, period. Now, the fact that they're, seem to be changing their attitude about even the rates at this point, you know, I, I think, you know, being a representative of the community, and we have an, I'm talking about all of us, you know, we have an obligation to, to look at and carefully assess what's best for the community. And, you know, maybe, maybe this thing will go a little further. Yeah, I don't know. We'll find out.
Jeff has a comment.
At this point, I think, I, I know, at this point, I think we have to continue full-speed ahead. Anyway, yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I, I, I think we kind of predicted where we, we'd be where we are a couple, a number of years ago because, especially when we had the issue with the turning off of the spigot, so to speak, or the closing of the spigot, you know, with Andover. But, so I, I think we anticipated we'd be at this point somewhere along the line. You know, when we talk about, you know, strategic plans for the town, we talk about programs that we, how we want the town to grow, it becomes important that we always maintain our relationships with our surrounding communities in such a way that it's, it's a positive environment, not a negative environment. You're right, I think that, that, and I agree with Mike, to some degree, that, that, you know, why are we having the conversations? Because I think that the, the MWRA situation is a, a profoundly beneficial route to go for us, okay? But we continue to have the conversation with them because with our strategic plan and with our town growth, you're right. You know, we have Main Street, and we might be able to use the water connection up at the town line. So having the discussions, having good relationships with our neighbors is, is very important. But I honestly don't see us not going with MWRA. I can't imagine that at this point.
Okay, so any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have, I just have a comment in relation to it.
I, I think it's a point that we continue the dialogue and have a meeting with them. And again, as it unfolds, and they certainly have changed their attitude towards dealing with us, again, we've, they're taking the route that we're taking because of previous discussions we had with the town of Andover. But, you know, they've had some sort of an epiphany here, and that's okay. And if it's to our benefit, then it's, it's our obligation, again, to take a look and see what they have to offer us. And, and I would encourage us to continue to do so. And while we've made some major investments towards the MWRA, and we're still continuing to move forward with that, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be considering some other long-term offer from Andover if it's, if it's viable, you know, from a timeline standpoint if it works. So I would encourage the administration to continue and the board to continue the dialogue with Andover. But the burden's on them, I mean, as far as the timeline and our ability to react to any proposals that they have that we would consider to be meaningful and in the town's best interest. So I wait to hear what they have to offer and timelines associated with it. And again, to the chairman's point, you know, we don't want to have to be dealing with the vagaries of changing in boards and administrations up and, up at Andover, which we would not have with the, with the MWRA. That's, that's important for us, looking forward. So if they can come up with some sort of a proposal, but again, capital improvement-wise is certainly significantly less, you know, in the short run, to continue doing business with them. But in the long term, meeting the demands that we foresee, you know, let's see what they have to offer. So I would continue the dialogue, but the burden's on them. And I think the administrator has conveyed that, and I'm sure it was Prisco and Mr. Misari did too, and that we're up there. It's, it's up to them to provide. So I think it's incumbent upon us to, to do the due diligence, to respectfully consider their, their proposals. And meantime, we have to stay on the path that we're on because they set the timeline for us as to what this agreement they were currently operating under has forced us to make major capital, you know, investments moving forward in order to meet our needs. This was all been thrust upon us as a direct result of their reaction to our needs and their ability to, at the time, their assessment and their ability to meet our needs. So I await their proposals and I look forward to hearing them, and I would certainly consider them. But meantime, we have to continue on the path that we're going.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to clarify my remarks. I, I'd be in favor of continuing the discussions just for our economic redundancy plan, not for shifting away from the direction, the path that we've now invested in. You know, when I first joined, that was years into the making of what they could offer in terms of this contract. And it was years in the negotiation to arrive at that contract with them. So whether it's an epiphany or not, that was years in the making of what they could offer us.
The epiphany's recent.
Yeah. So I think for redundancy, I think, I think we heard in the fire department budget, we go quite a bit there for emergencies, you know, mutually there for things.
Of the one.
Right. So, so I think it's great to, you know, again, reiterate that it's being good neighbors, and redundancy for us would be emergency if there's some issue with the connection to MWRA. So when I say to continue discussion, I, I would say for that purpose of achieving that goal and not necessarily veering off the course, I wouldn't be in favor, like Mr. Gil says, I would not be in favor of veering off the course that we're on to connect with the MWRA. We, we have so much now invested in that, so much assistance from the state on, and that, so much assistance from Reading on that, that I'd be, I wouldn't be in favor of shifting off course at this point.
Just one more add to, off of Kate's. You know, I'd like to get back to the focus of bringing or entertaining what it would, how we could work together to explore this option of tying into the Great Lawrence Sore District at some point. I think those would be valuable discussions because they'll have a direct benefit of it as well, where we, you know, this is so far down the road that I just don't, I just don't want to see them waste any time. I don't want to see them putting a lot of valuable resources for us to turn around and end up saying no. It just doesn't seem right to me. It seems wrong to have them kind of spin their wheels to continue to provide us this data on water when I, great, we're just so far down this path that they put us down. And I don't think they disagree with us on that. I mean, that letter that the DPW director wrote us, maybe he regrets it at this point. I would know if I were him, I would certainly regret it. And, you know, we tried to talk some sense into him. Mr. Larry, you, we were there, I believe, and Bob, I know you were there a few times. This, we told them this is where we're going to be. I think for mutual benefit, let's focus on the emergency tie-in and let's start exploring the Sore tie-in. And I think, and I know the city of Lawrence would appreciate it as well, because I'm, I know they could use some additional flow into that system and some more Sore, some more of our ratepayers.
All right. Can we move on to the next item on our agenda, or do we want to skip it? We discussed the regional transportation options. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So by way of an update, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
By way of an update, I did have a opportunity to meet with Representative Jones and the Executive Director of the Statewide Association of Regional Transit Authorities. And it seems that there may be some resources available to us out there for paratransit services from a local regional transit authority, in particular, the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, which is based to our north and somewhat to the east. I spoke with the administrator of the MBRTA, and he confirmed that, yeah, they might be something they'd be able to do. According to my, to my meeting with Representative Jones and the Director of the Statewide Association of RTAs, there's a possibility of us being able to effectively transfer some of our MBTA assessment towards services contracted through one of the RTAs, in this case, the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority. So it was a very intriguing option that may or may not have any, an impact on the town's budget. So first, you know, I want to thank Representative Jones for arranging that discussion. And secondly, I wanted to apprise the board that this is a conversation that's taking place, is something that will continue to take place, more specifically at a meeting scheduled to take place this coming Monday, May first, at ten o'clock here in the town hall. I've asked the town planner to join. She will have the consultant that we identified through the Community Compact Funding for evaluating transportation options for the elderly and disabled. That person will also join us. And I thought that it would certainly be prudent to have representation from the board of Selectmen as well in attendance at that meeting, you know, one or perhaps two members of the board. Mostly because we need, to some extent, we have to determine what the need is. I, I, you know, I think I know what the need is based on the conversation we've had and the calls that I think we all get. It's paratransit, that's the biggest issue that we have in the community. I think we would love to have a fixed route, bus service running north-south on Main Street and east-west on Route sixty-two. I don't think that the financial capacity is there for us to be able to fund that, nor do I think that the demand is there at the moment. But the paratransit, it appears we may have a viable option and something that's certainly worth evaluating. I think we may have had a preference at one point to look to the MBTA to provide the ride. Based on the T's finances, I don't think that that's likely to materialize in the short term. But the Merrimack Valley RTA would appear, has the capacity to do so. But, you know, again, obviously needs to be vetted through some meetings. So I thought I'd update the board and ask if the board would want to assign a couple of, our member or members to attend. Yes, Jeff?
Yes. Question number one, the MBTA assessment.
Yes.
What is that number?
It's approximately a hundred and five thousand dollars, I believe.
Per?
Year, annual, as an annual assessment.
Wow, okay. And...
For all the services we got.
Yeah, for all the services.
And that's prescribed by state statute.
What's that?
That's prescribed by state statute.
Some of that can be transferred, and we get something out of it.
Right, right.
Obviously. It's a no-brainer.
I, I would love to go, I'm, I'm going to go anyway on, on the first, but I'd, I'd love to go on the first at ten AM to...
Is this the meeting on the first of May?
First of May.
May first, yes.
May first.
Anyone else like to go?
I'd like to go, but, you know, there's all the more, that's fine.
It would be nice if someone else could go, I mean, I just, I'd get back into the...
He said, well, I mean, Mike said that he, he'd be interested in going as well.
Okay, that's fine with me. The rest of the board members? Jeff and Mike on the rest, where, what time is the meeting?
Ten o'clock here at the town hall.
In this room?
Um, I believe so.
So our next board meeting is the eighth, correct?
Yes.
With the exception of a reord meeting on the fourth.
Yes. Yes.
And I take it that all the board members here can attend the meeting on the 4th?
What time is that?
7:00. It'll be a very short meeting, as it usually is.
Yeah, that's just the reorg, you remember?
Yeah. I'm just, I'm not even having a laugh.
I have communicated that date and time with the other individual running for the Board of Selectmen, so that whoever wins will be present for the meeting on the 4th. At which point we reorganize and move on to our challenges next year.
Bigger and better things.
All right. And we have a meeting on the 8th and then I gather on the 22nd, right, Mike?
That's correct, yes. A town meeting two weeks later.
Yeah. We got a lot of work to do in the month of May, leading up to town meeting. We still have a few things to do.
So about the 15th.
Not the 15th, correct. So, Mr. Chairman, through you, I know you were not present at the last meeting, but we attempted to schedule things as such to have the warrant voted on on May 8th. That would also be the same evening as the budget hearing for FY 2018. And I also expect it to be the same evening for the submission of the capital plan from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
It's gonna be another busy meeting.
It will be. Part of the reason that we wanted to go through and adjust, uh, make as many recommendations as possible this evening, so we didn't have that carryover workload on May 8th, and perhaps avoid needing to have a meeting on May 1st, which certainly the board may opt to do, but at this point, based on the progress, may not have to do. They seem to be, you know, moving along, granted with a lot of, a lot of work to do.
Okay, let's see if we can get through the rest of the meeting quickly. We have, uh, minutes for March 13th.
Do that next meeting?
Regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 13, 2017 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Take it on, Mr. Yul. On the motion, all in favor? And we have also my 20th regular session.
Mr. Chairman, through you a comment. For those who have not observed, uh, we had, uh, an error in the motion with regard to the approval of the ballot question. And it was not of the board's doing, but it was a scrivener's error on the, on our part in giving a motion that rather than include the word "within" for the ballot question relative to recreational marijuana, it included the word "with," which was less than clear. And in consultation with the town clerk, town council, and the State Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office, they recommended that it be considered a scrivener's error, that the intention of the board was clear with regard to the question, and that we adjust the ballot question, which we have done for the printed ballots and we've done for the template that's up on the town website. Why am I bringing this up? Because the March 20th, 2017 minutes are the meeting at which that vote happened, and we've added a note at the end clarifying, um, that, uh, that at the meeting this evening, at which these minutes were approved, the ministerial error was noted, recreational marijuana prohibition ballot question at the May 2nd, 2017 town election will read as follows. And I'll read it, if that's all right, just for the record. Shall the town prohibit the operation of all types of marijuana establishments as defined in General Law Chapter 94G, Section 1, including marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses within, emphasis, the town of North Reading? Question mark.
So I guess you're just asking us now to approve the adjusted regular session minutes of the 20th, correct?
Yes.
It's in there. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 20, 2017 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Here, a second.
Second.
Take it on, Mr. Yul. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Unanimous. Upper abstaining, I'm sorry.
I wasn't there.
One abstention. Okay, we have regular and executive session minutes of April 3rd. Let's start with regular session, Ms. Manifelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 3rd regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Take it on, Mr. Yul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I abstain. Now it's four and one abstention. Executive session of the same date.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 3rd, 2017 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Take it on, Mr. Yul. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
And the chairman abstains, having not attended the meeting. Okay, let's see, we're, uh, review the town administrator's evaluation. As I reported earlier, the, uh, Steve and I, uh, did the compiled evaluation, which you have a copy of. Uh, I thank everybody for getting the, uh, the individual reviews to me before I had surgery, which allowed me to get some time to pull it all together. So I appreciate that. And, uh, we reviewed the town administrator's regular, uh, evaluation as compared to his personal, uh, review himself. And we talked about some items where there were fairly substantial differentials in what the board, uh, rated and how he rated himself. And most of the time, he underrated himself versus the board, so we have major issues. But we've completed that, and that will get filed in his, uh, his personnel file, as we do every year. And then, uh, are there any comments or questions regarding that at this point? Like, it was pretty clear, you got all the information in advance. And we follow the same procedure we followed in the past. The chair and the vice chair have sat down with it, gone through the review. All of your comments and notes are included in the review.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, and Catherine, in the future, when you're turning it in, depending on who moves the chairman, if you turn in the Word document, it makes it a little easier on the individual getting the information in.
I didn't want you to change my answer.
I gathered that, but I wouldn't do that. I said, this is coming from a lawyer, I guess.
P D F.
But thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I always want to thank you for all the time you spent pulling that together. I know it's five people.
So Catherine gave me an extra task. I had to get to a copy of the, they'll be, you know, acrobat where you can actually change it.
I, yeah, I can.
Or we should just put her officially on probation right now.
So I gotta, I gotta round it anyway, Catherine.
Yeah, thank you.
Just for the record.
Administrator probation.
Well, whatever can be done can be undone.
And then, most importantly, uh, you know, I've been working and the board's been working with it. We had one meeting prior to, uh, my formal meeting with Michael Gilberto on the agreement. Steve and I met with him and then, uh, we made a couple of minor changes to his agreement, which starts on July 1st, 2017, running to June 30th, 2020. And today, uh, my executive session, and now we're gonna, uh, do we have a motion?
Uh, I think the first thing to do, Mr. Chairman, is maybe report to the public that the overall evaluation of the town administrator was, uh, overall exemplary and positive score of whatever it was. It was up there.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, it was up there. Two hundred what? Anyway, it was, uh, he just happens to have it in front of him. Yeah, 219.
Yes.
He got an A.
Yeah, he got an A. He got an A, overall A.
How many possible points?
And unanimity here. And, um, I think it's important to acknowledge, uh, obviously, his performance over the last, uh, the last year, but over the last three years now, almost three years, has been extraordinary and, um, have put a lot on his plate and he's done an awful lot in a very short period of time. And, you know, I for one, I certainly appreciate all the effort that he's, that he does put in and, uh, and the level of professionalism that he provides to us. And, uh, I've served with a lot of administrators over the years and you're doing a terrific job. I certainly appreciate all the effort that you're, you're putting in for us and on our behalf.
It's a job above and beyond all of our expectations and...
I mean, I think we are at the point where we can say what, uh, we, how we really feel about, uh, the TA, I think. Uh, first of all, I do thank you for, uh, doing what you have done to, to put this review together and to make it, uh, as fair as possible and, uh, be accurate on the services that are provided by the TA. Uh, you know, to my, you know, I, I only say that, you know, to you that, um, you're so exemplary. Um, you work with people on a people basis, you know, as, as on a human basis, and it's easy to work with you. Uh, your performance is, is not, not only great, but the way that you work with people is great. And, you know, some of us have an opportunity, we talk to other people around town, employees or whatever, just general conversation. And I know that the feedback that I get from everybody is that, uh, it's, it's a pleasure to work with you and it's a pleasure to work for you. So, um, and I don't know if I'm gonna be here in a couple of weeks, you know, and I just, you know, that's what I think about you. You do a fantastic job.
Steve, thank you.
Well, I can go next. I think you're brilliant. I think you're the town's serendipity. I agree with Mr. Yul. I think you execute your responsibilities with such a high degree of professionalism, but also with such humility in terms of how you're thinking of not just us and how you're communicating with not just us, but you clearly have our town workforce in mind in terms of everything that's going on with them too, and you're able to really connect us in that way with the workforce and connect us to what's going on with everything in the town. And, you know, I think you're, I think, I think you deserve all fives. And I'm not shocked that you yourself rated yourself differently than we did. That's not a surprise to me, but, uh, just keep up the great work. It's a pleasure to work with you and, and it's, uh, I'm thankful and grateful for everything you're doing for the town and for us as a board.
Thank you.
Well, I gave you an extra point for the great first name and for having a vowel at the end of your last name. So you got extra points for all that. But on a serious note, Mike, it is the little things that you do that I know even some of your own staff probably don't see it, but they are very effective in helping us get things done. And, you know, what we've done in regards to changing the status of the town with the acquisition of Jade, the potential sale of that Jade Berry, a lot of it is credited to you because there was a lot of little things that we had to do that, uh, you had to pull together last minute. And if we pull this off by December 1st, uh, it certainly is a lot to do with you and you alone. And I know you don't like to take credit for it, but it truly does fall on you. And on behalf of the whole town, we have a debt of gratitude for the level of effort it took you. It wasn't leaving here at, you know, 4:30 or 5:30 to get that done. We know you were here late evenings and, uh, it honestly, it's, it's gonna really help us change the, the future for us and the future direction. Whether all of us are here or none of us are here in the next five years, you put us on a path and it really proves that this board made the right decision selecting you. And you should be very proud and your family should be very proud, so thank you.
Thank you, Slav.
And your wife.
Yes.
God bless her.
Cause you're hours.
I don't know how she wants to help her personally. I have a hard time.
Here's Mike. Okay, offer a comment.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the, the positive feedback. Um, you know, I, I continue to consider it, uh, an honor to work for, for the town. And, uh, I enjoy very much the working relationship that, uh, I have with, uh, the board, that I feel I have with the board and with the individual members of the board. And I always tie back to something I said at the, in the interview, sitting at that table or a different table at that location, with this table set up in a different configuration.
With actually new tables. You've got a new table still.
At these locations, but at different tables, uh, where, you know, I expressed that that was something that was important to me because I think it's important for all us, all of us to be in communication and understanding what's going on and to have our relationships so that we function well. Uh, in terms of the, um, you know, the positive outcome, as I've said in the past, I, I hope that my evaluation is an indicator of how well we as a whole are doing, meaning the, the board, the other elected officials, and of course, the employees here in the Town Hall and outside the Town Hall who do the good work of the town day in and day out, um, selflessly and that, you know, depending upon their position, perhaps not noticed, but doing very meaningful work. And so I, I would say to the town employees, thank you for your support and for your, for your hard work, day in and day out. My final comment, um, and, uh, I'll, I'll just note that you mentioned my family and I, um, my family is what makes it possible for me to contribute in the way that, um, the board's identified here and to do whatever small part I might be doing here. And, uh, and that, that starts with my wife, who shoulders so much of the burden at home to allow me to be out in the evenings, and my two boys, Max and Noah, who are so understanding when Daddy has a meeting, to the point where they report it back to me when I have a meeting, so they know the term and they know what it means. Um, and, uh, so I owe a tremendous debt to my, to my wife, Jen, who allows me to participate in the way that I do. Um, and I'd also note, uh, two other people who I didn't mention last year, and it's been eating at me for not mentioning them, but, uh, my mother and father, Paul and Maureen, who help care for my children as well. Um, they, they fill in the gaps when we need the gaps to be filled in. They, they watch, uh, watch our kids one day a week. And, uh, I just say thank you to them as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to, I just want to comment that, you know, one of the things that, you know, I think I've been chair for the period that Michael has been on board and, uh, I meet with him every Wednesday morning, which allows us to help get the agenda set for the coming meetings and to discuss new, new things that, you know, eventually come down to the board. Whoever is the chair going forward, uh, I would strongly suggest that it doesn't have to be a Wednesday necessarily, but it ought to be a weekly meeting with the town administrator is very important. And of course, other board members can be at their own schedules with the town administrator because I think it's very important also. Uh, so with that, I don't see a, a written motion to approve the contract, the new contract agreement?
There wasn't.
Oh, you do have one?
I could just make it up.
Yeah, okay. Would you do that, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify and sign the agreement with the, between the town of North Reading and the town administrator, Michael Gilberto, for a three-year period through...
Ending June 30th, 2020.
July 1st.
July 1st, 2017.
Through June 30th.
To June 31st, 2020.
June 30th.
June 30th, 2020.
2020. Second.
Take it on, Mr. O'Leary. On the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. The, uh, document that we discussed this evening before going public, uh, is a kind of draft form. It needs to be formalized and signed by the board, which will be done over the next week at some point. Board members will take a commitment, sign the document at some point in time. Uh, there's a draft, Michael, in the, uh, drop box.
It's if you're in agreement.
I can provide you with a straight of coffee to, uh, you know, get it into a form, get the draft out of it.
Yes, we'll finalize it and let the board members know.
You don't have to do it tonight.
So we have also ratified memorandum of agreement for North Reading Library Staff, which is a contract for the next, oh, it's two years, right?
Yeah, virtual active.
For the next two years. Does it cover this year? We have, I think there is a motion.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify and sign the memorandum of agreement between the town of North Reading and the North Reading Library Staff, the period of July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Take it on, Mr. Yul. I don't think there's any further discussion. It was reviewed first in executive session. So on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Town administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, through you, just one comment that I'll offer, uh, with regard to the TA report, and that is that, uh, the work continues with regard to the Arthur Kenny restroom facility. We had a walk-through this morning where four interested vendors showed up, which was encouraging. Uh, many more had pulled the plans, uh, of course, not yet returning. Many more had told the plans, of course, not yet returning. A critical moment, it will be Wednesday, when we appear before the state board of examiners of plumbers and gas fitters to ask for a further reduction in the number of fixtures from 13 to 10 total. That would be five in the women's and five in the men's room. Parks director Marty Tilton, myself, and plumbing inspector Ed Zeridiano will attend that meeting. And again, thank Representative Brad Jones' office for his assistance in facilitating the fast consideration of this reduction. The proposals on that project are due in on May 4th, a week from this coming Thursday. And there has been a meeting of the athletic facilities committee scheduled for Friday, May 5th, at 3 o'clock in the distance learning lab over at the high school, middle school complex, and that will be to review the results of the procurement process. And we also expect there to be a meeting of the capital improvement planning committee at that same time to hear the responses. And it will all come together on Monday, the 8th, for our meeting Monday evening, May, which will finalize the capital budget as well as the town meeting warrant. I believe that that includes my comments at this point. Oh, I do have one other comment, which is that we're slowly ramping up now a street-sweeping plan, and it will be putting out some more publicity for residents to be aware of. You may have seen some activity in the center of town, so just be aware that there'll be some more publicity out there with regard to that over the coming weeks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, Jeff.
I wanted to ask you a question about the, about the, this morning you had a, you had some contractors come out and do some bids and so on.
It's a walk-through. They did not submit bids. They come to learn more about the project.
Okay, so they, but they have to submit a bid by the 4th.
May 4th.
Okay. Were there any, any dollar amount requirements or any, in the presentation to them about how much they, if there's a cap on the bid number, I guess, that's what I'm trying to find out.
So, sure, we don't provide them a cap. They ask us for a cost estimation based on any information that we may have available. And so we conveyed that we had a cost estimate of $600,000, and we conveyed that we believe that that was an all-inclusive number for the entirety of the project.
You mean the bathrooms, the slab and snack shack?
Yes. That's my understanding of what was related during the walk-through.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary.
All the new business?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I just want to, again, encourage people to get out and vote on election day, and aside from Mr. Yule running for reelection and Mr. Schultz seeking to get a seat at the table here with the school committee candidates, again, these people deserve your respect and participation in the process. And in addition to that, we have the ballot question in relation to medical marijuana, excuse me, recreational marijuana, whether you want it in the community or not. So I think there's ample reason to come out and have interest, and I hope that everybody would participate, and I wish Mr. Yule the best of luck in his attempt to be reelected to the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Yule, is that?
Yes.
There's another one here, too.
Yeah.
So, since we met last, the deadline to submit bids on the 102 Lowell Road RFP has come and gone, and unfortunately, I have to report that we didn't get any bids.
You got no bids?
No bids. We did have the fitters conference. One person did show up, as you were informed, but that individual company was looking to build residential as an option, so that's not on the, on the.
What's the next plan?
So I'm here tonight to, that's where I was before this, the EDC wanted to meet, you make a formal request to the board, their recommendation to the board, and they're going to make the same to the CPC. Their recommendation is that we hold off for at least a year, allow Pulte to get into the site, start their development, and once the first building's up, we feel confident that that 102 Lowell Road become a lot more interesting to a potential commercial business once they start to see a development going in. And this recommendation also is supported by Fran DeCoste, our TM, our commercial real estate broker. He felt that we would be better off waiting as well. So that's the recommendation, but it's purely up to the board what you want to do going forward, but I support that recommendation of the EDC. I think that's the right thing to do. The only thing we do lose is we lose another 5% if we don't sell it within the first two years, but that's okay. I think we've done pretty good on 104, so, but we still have an opportunity to sell it within the next five years and get 5% in addition to all the other percentages. None of those will change in our sale partnership model, by the way. Everything will stay in place. The only one that's affected is that one incentive, which is sell within two years to get 10%, sell within five years to get 5% extra.
Put a West Side station there.
Out of the feasibility side, I think it makes a lot of sense to consider.
What is it, two and a half acres?
Two, yes, it's two and a half acres. And I think it would be an excellent location for a fire, for the fire station. I do, I think it'd be a great spot.
But...
But, again, I don't want to dictate...
What was the, what was Fran's take as to why there was such a lack of interest?
Uh, he did, well, he just believes that really there's nothing there. You don't see anything. You know, they drive by, they don't see any potential future customers to put a restaurant there or any kind of service. But he really feels, once they start to see a development and they see there's going to be 1,000 people there, it's going to change the scope of that use.
You thought the doughnuts were Starbucks? You're getting rid of them.
Maybe, but we have them right down the road. I think you would see a chain restaurant be very, he believes a chain restaurant would be very interested in moving in there when they start to see these tall structures going up and 50 people, 50 units in each structure. I think that will change the game, but I still think, even selfishly, we should consider it for a potential site for a West Side fire station or the new fire station. You know, when we talk about the fire station and the use, it's something that we have to figure out because we know that one's just not big enough. It just seems a, it seems like a waste to put a lot of money into an old building where we could build a brand-new headquarters on this side and maybe use that as the satellite. But it's something that we should obviously consider as we go through this in October.
So from a timing point of view, do we want to put this on, I don't think, I think we're going to put it on our agenda for further discussion. Go ahead, wait until after the meeting at this point. We're not going to lose anything from it anyway.
We're in no rush.
Yeah.
Remember, the appraisal on that property was 280 grand, so I think the longer we wait, the more valuable it will actually get.
What else you got, Michael?
Although it might be more valuable, again, I think our RFP limited what it's going to be because with the current, with the new zoning there, which was just approved, the value of that appraisal would go up because it now allows for housing.
Which we could do, and by the way, and I believe we have enough money remaining in our budget to do another appraisal if the board wanted to do that, but I'd have to check with Daniel.
There's no need to do an updated appraisal if you're not going to allow permitted uses on the property. So I think we just have to decide whether or not what we want to do.
I just offer it as information if you want to consider it.
I did, Michael.
That's it.
Catherine?
Just welcome back, and Bob actually called, Selena Mauser actually called me the day he got, got home from the hospital to have a lengthy discussion about town business, so didn't really stop it much.
Well, I was rather impressed that I could reach you, given so busy with you.
Oh, that's twice.
Boy.
I know. No, I know, so...
No, that was great. That was really great.
Anyway, so welcome back and, you know, glad to see you.
Good to be back. I'm getting in, I'm getting to full speed, another couple of weeks probably, but...
Yeah.
Jeffrey?
Steve's right, we have an election coming up, and I encourage voters to come and vote, and people who haven't voted to come and vote. It's a privilege and an honor to be able to do that. And we have, obviously, for selectmen, there is a contested, contested race, and in the school committee, we have a contested race, so that's, that's good. That means there's more people involved. Of course, I have no idea what the results are going to be. I do have a preference, but I want to take this opportunity, in case I don't have the opportunity later on, you know, to say that three years plus three, I've sat at this table behind this desk, plus the newer version, and it's always been a privilege to be able to be here and work with everybody on the board. And I mean, well, actually, seven of us, let's put it that way, okay? All of us, because I always learn, every time I come here, I always learn something new. I get a lot of experienced people sharing their ideas, trying to do good things for the town, and I respect that. Differences aside, that's a minor thing. That's actually a good thing when you have differences because they conjure up new ideas and so on. I want to say, Jane, you are so good at what you do here, making sure the minutes are as accurate as possible. I mean, we can be bloviated at times, and it's not necessarily very easy for you to capture everything we say, but you have, by far, been the best cook that we've ever had.
You definitely have.
Okay, just Secretary, I'm forgetting the title, but no.
You don't get to include that.
Right, you know, speaking, you know, he doesn't, he doesn't get those high rankings without you. Just remember that, okay? So, but thank you for everything that you do, you know, for us. Yeah, thank you very much. Again, Mike, you know, I'll iterate what I said before, working with you, going back to when we used to drive with, you know, back and forth to one town, different town to another with the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline. We talked about all kinds of things, from waffles to, to solving the problems in the town. And, yes, you know, I didn't say it before, but, you know, behind every great man is a great wife, and you obviously are very fortunate in that, in that case, so, you know, thank you for all that you do, okay? And Steve, you've always, you know, given very clear and insightful perspectives of the, of a given situation, you know? And, you know, Mike, I want to say, you know, you and I, we have our differences for various reasons, but you do hard work for the town, you work hard as a selectman, you come up with many good ideas, and I respect that. And, and working with you, you know, what, is it one year now or two years now? No, one year, right?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, it seems like...
It's about a name.
It's been a long year.
Yeah, well, it seems like I've been working with the board a long time, so, you know, I appreciate your legal input and your quick assessment on, on, you know, things that come before you. You know, I know it's been time-consuming for you and sometimes, but I think you're quick, you take, you learn things quickly, I guess is the best way for me to say it. And Bob, if there's ever a term that is correct here, Chairman for Life, you have always been non-judgmental, and you, you know, no matter what you, you may think that what we say half the time is crazy from each individual at one given time or another, but you are as steady as a calm lake, all right? You hold us together and you make sure that we stay on course, and I admire that. So hopefully, I'm back again, and then again, another two years, I can say the same thing. That would be nice. So, you know, that's how I feel. I do have a little bit of a frustration, and, because I don't like to end things on a negative tone, but I was extremely shocked today. The campaign has been a bit of a tough campaign, and I don't mean tough in doing it, but in words by many people. And I've tried to, in all my ability, to not get involved in that, and I think I've done a good job in that regard. I just try to express my points, my viewpoints, and so on. And really, all I'm trying to do, like you, all of you, I'm trying to save everybody of the town money, just like you are trying to save the town money and so on. But on my, when I came out of my house tonight to, to come to, come to the meeting, I, the most astonishing thing happened. My opponent was parked just a little bit outside, halfway down from my neighbor's property, which is a small property with their lights on, facing my house. And I came out and I recognized the car, and so I just ignored it, and I got in my car and was about to start, and my opponent made a U-turn and sped away. And I have no idea why that was done. I can't be in somebody else's mind, all right? All I know is I turned around like to come here, and I came to the stoplight, and it was, that was confirmed. I don't, I don't understand that, and I don't understand the negativism when people are really just trying to do a good job and just trying to be, put their best foot forward. It should just never be as mean as it sometimes get. And I say this for the next person more than myself, okay? But I was really shocked to have seen that, and, I don't know what to say. And I hate to end on that kind of a note, but it was just too bizarre for me, so I apologize, you know, in...
What are you talking about? What are we doing here? It doesn't even make sense what you're talking about, Jeff. If you're trying to call out, this isn't a time for a political stand, and this is unacceptable, Mr. Sariel. Sorry, this is inappropriate, and I don't even know what the heck you're talking about. If no one's here to defend themselves, then it's not right. If there was an issue, you should deal with the other people, but to make your political stance is, this is not what we're here for.
It's not a political stance, I'm just telling you, it was something that I experienced, and I find, when I look at the town and I look at the positive things, I try to concentrate on them, but sometimes, things happen that need to stay.
I don't understand what happened. You want to bring up your...
Anything else, Jeff?
That's it.
So, so Jeff, one is I want to thank you for the past three years, and I wish you luck in the election. And I don't want to jinx anything by saying goodbye to you tonight or anything, so this is what I would ask, and maybe you can make that work, but if in the event that at the end of the election you lose, I would like you to come to our meeting, the beginning of our regular open session meeting on the 8th, so that we can formally thank you for your efforts over the past three years.
Thank you very much.
Rather than to take time to do that, you know, now, and people thinking, well, he's gone, when you may not be gone.
Right.
I think that...
I appreciate you not burying me now.
Anyway, with respect, I want to thank all the board members for helping out in the review process and in the, getting the TA contract done at a time I thought it was fair for the current board to get that complete, rather than let it fall into after the election when things could change. And I thank all of you for supporting me while I was getting better, and I'm, you know, probably at 75% now. I'm kind of taking it easy every other day, and, you know, in a week or two, I hope, I've seen the doctor in three more weeks, at which time then he'll be happy and say, yeah, you go do what you want. So I've been, you know, appreciating all the support and all the thank yous, and look forward to our next meeting, because we've got a lot to do and not a lot of time to get it done.
Well, your 75% is always far better than mine, 100%. So I'll take it 75, really, Jeff.
You never know. Anyway, at this point, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second.
Second. On the motion, all in favor.
Aye.
Close.